Good afternoon. Thank you all for joining us here today. We are going to cover two important topics this morning. We'll begin with a policy meeting discussing human trafficking and getting an update from the chairs of our Phoenix Compass Plan. Councilman Jim Waring and the distinguished Cindy McCain, and we are certainly honored to have Cindy McCain with us here today. We joined her earlier this morning to dedicate to celebrate the dedication of Terminal 3, which is now known as the John S. McCain III Terminal. So it has been a great way to celebrate his legacy in our state, and thank you Cindy. We're also joined by our county attorney, who's been a longtime partner of the city of Phoenix and involved in this important topic. We want to thank everyone who's been working for many years to make Phoenix a leader in this area, including many of our distinguished members of the panel from whom you'll get to hear. We will start the council meeting with the human trafficking item, then we will hear updates from council members, including requests for information. After those updates, we will take a 10-minute break and then come back to the chamber for a work-study session on red light cameras. We will have a public comment during the policy portion of our meeting, and then the work-study is really focused on an opportunity for council members to have the chance to study a topic in depth. So with that, I will turn it over to Councilman Waring, who has been leading our efforts on combating human trafficking, to introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate this opportunity very much to give an update to the other council members about what we've been doing on human trafficking. I really appreciate your support of this and putting this meeting together. And as you mentioned, I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the beautiful ceremony this morning that you and your staff worked so hard on. I thought it was phenomenal, and it meant a lot to me. So I appreciated very much being included, but also just how it laid out. It was perfect, and thank you for that. I would like to ask anybody who's in the audience, not up at the front desk, the front seat, but those who are in the audience who either are on the task force now, have been on the task force, or on the state task force, or generally come to our meetings. Would you guys please rise? I just want to recognize you for your work on this issue. I really want to give a shout-out to now Congressman, but then Mayor Stanton for putting this together both over the Super Bowl in 2013. I was honored that he picked me as chair, but it's great that we've continued this work, and I just, I think so many members of the audience being so intimately involved in this, I think is a fantastic testament to the importance of the issue. By way of introduction of Cindy McCain, I will say this: I am ashamed that when I was asked to chair this, I didn't know as much about human trafficking as I should have. And thanks in large measure to her efforts. She has many skills and obviously very accomplished, and there's no reason to go without unless she really wants me to. But I will say one thing: If she has one legacy that will be irrefutable, it is her work on human trafficking and bringing attention to this issue, which 10 years ago was not in the public eye as it is now. And I think that alone is a huge testament to her single-minded efforts in this, and I think that's benefited all of us. I know it's benefited me, because as I said, I wasn't as focused on this. But I know a lot of you in the audience were, and so I am about to shut up, to the mercy of all, I'm sure, and turn it over to experts. But I just want to say thank you, Cindy, for being here today, as well as the county attorney, who I have known through Rotary. And when she was a private citizen, she worked on this issue long before she knew she was going to be county attorney. She focused on these efforts. You're going to get a very robust discussion today from several city staffers and experts in this field, and so I want to turn it over to Deanna, but thank you all for being here very much.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We're pleased to be here today to provide you with an overview of the work the task force has accomplished over the past several years. Joining me at the table today is Tamara Spinley, Human Services Director. As Councilman Waring said, we have a champion and leader in addressing and combating human trafficking, Cindy McCain; Cindy Stotler, our Housing Director; Dominique Rosepowitz, a professor at ASU; Commander Jim Gallagher with the Phoenix Police Department; and Maricopa County Attorney Alistair Adele. Again, as we said earlier, the task force is co-chaired by Councilman Jim Waring and Cindy McCain. It also consists of a broad range of individuals committed to addressing trafficking. As we just mentioned a moment ago, many of those individuals are here with us today, and we want to really thank them for all of the work they've accomplished over the last several years. At this time, I'd like to turn it over to Cindy McCain.
Thank you. I'm very humbled to be sitting up here today with so many experts in the field and people that have worked so hard and so diligently through the years to make this issue not only front and center, but continue to make it front and center. So thank you, and thank you for including me in this today. Jim, thank you. You've been a good friend for a long time, and I had great, great belief in you when you were first appointed. I knew you could do it, and I'm grateful that you not only took on this mantle, but that you believe in it so strongly now. Not just for all of us sitting in here, but certainly for the victims, most importantly. Mayor Gallegos, first of all, thank you so much for that lovely ceremony today. For those of you who are not there, my husband's only been gone a year, so it's a bit hard for me to appear in public on his behalf anymore, but thank you. It was indeed touching, and my family, I've gotten calls from all of them today, so they're all very excited and also deeply honored that you would do those things for us and for my family. I'd like to acknowledge Gil Arantia, who is here today. Gil is my co-chair on the Human Trafficking Council through the governor's office. Thank you, Gil. The city of Phoenix and state of Arizona are leaders in the fight against human trafficking. I am proud to serve on the city's Human Trafficking Task Force, as well as co-chair the statewide Arizona Human Trafficking Council. We have made great strides in the fight against trafficking since both the task force and the HT Council were formed. There is plenty more to do to ensure that traffickers know that they are not welcomed here in Arizona, and that our children and vulnerable adults are protected from this incredibly heinous crime. Prior to the last Super Bowl in 2015, a group of concerned citizens were determined to prevent human trafficking around the Super Bowl. The Super Bowl was just the catalyst for concerned Arizonans to work together: fighting fight trafficking by training thousands of volunteers to know the signs and what to do, help improve services for victims, offer prevention education, and increase prosecutions of traffickers and buyers. Our efforts did not stop after the Super Bowl, I'm happy to say. They increased, and I'm proud of our city and state that the work we started five years ago and continuing and expanding from now are showing positive results. I was pleased that the Phoenix Airport put a human trafficking hotline in the bathroom stalls. I hope we can work together to get a hotline number advertised throughout the terminals visible for everybody to see. As we all know, trafficking happens every day across our beautiful state. Over the past five years, we have trained over 38,000 people in Arizona to recognize the signs of human trafficking. We are making progress on prevention education in our schools. Our police departments are second to none in routing out and arresting traffickers and buyers, and victim services have expanded. Through the collaborative model, we have reduced the run rate of minor victims from over 90% to less than 8%. Special recognition to the Phoenix Police Department's HEAT unit and their dedicated efforts to identify victims, assist in getting them trauma-informed and appropriate care, and then going after the traffickers and the buyers. This is 24/7 work, and they go above and beyond every single day. I was so pleased to showcase the great work that we have done on this issue in Arizona with the National Council on Sex Trafficking of Children and Youth. This federally mandated council made one field trip to look at best practices, and it was Arizona. Arizona's efforts and successes on this issue are being noticed nationwide. We have a lot to be proud of and a lot more to do to continue to improve and expand victim services and prosecute traffickers and buyers. I look forward to continuing this work with the city of Phoenix Human Trafficking Task Force and, of course, all of you in the room today. Thank you for having me.
Thank you, Mayor, and council members. I'm going to provide a quick overview of what we've done with our Human Trafficking Task Force. The task force was built to establish the city of Phoenix as a model in addressing and combating human trafficking. To accomplish this, the mission of the group was determined is important to create a comprehensive plan, collaborative and community-wide, innovative and focused, and creating a culture of change. So this is no longer seen in the city of Phoenix, and we will not tolerate it. We define four key areas of focus: community awareness and outreach, victim services, trainings, and law enforcement. We are here today to discuss a few examples of the successes we had over the past several years. In regards to community awareness and outreach efforts, we've had multiple press conferences, public service announcements, education materials in city facilities, and participated in the "Not Worth It" campaign. Councilman Jim Waring and CHISA Police held a press conference highlighting a new law providing victims an alternative defense to prostitution charges. In 2015, the then-mayor Greg Stanton, Councilman Waring; Cindy McCain created a public service announcements on stopping human trafficking. In addition, the police department and Councilman Waring created a 30-minute educational video. As part of this plan, we recruited celebrities, including Kurt and Brenda Warner. They created a public service announcement about human trafficking to support the Arizona "Not Buying It" campaign. Every January, you'll notice City Hall is lit blue to highlight Human Trafficking Month. Also, city has these posters on all the garbage trucks in every district. These are the signs that Mrs. McCain was talking about, that we put in the airport thanks to her support and advocacy to get them in the airport. So we have these in every single restroom, male and female, and then we continue to do presentations and provide trainings to the airport staff throughout the years. The city of Phoenix was one of 11 cities selected to be part of the city's Empowerment Against Sexual Exploitation Network. We coordinated another public service awareness campaign in both English and Spanish called "Not Worth It," an effort to educate potential buyers and the public about the harms of buying sex and the consequences of getting caught in the city of Phoenix. For victim services, we're highlighting the increased funding we received, Starfish Place and the Drop-In Center. In 2015, the city of Phoenix received $235,000 in funding for a position to enhance services for adults and minor sex trafficking victims, and that position's held up in the HEAT unit. Also highlighting a few of the accomplishments in the past few years, they served 155 clients with over 1,400 services. We would also like to thank Nancy Baldwin, who's here today, and the Hickey Foundation, who funded 24 city staff, including first responders, to attend the Shared Hope Conference over the past five years. I'm now going to turn it over to Cindy Stotler to discuss her first place.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor, and council members. Phoenix Starfish Place is a 15-unit apartment community in Council District 3 that provides permanent supportive housing for human trafficking survivors and their children. It took over a year of planning, lots of creativity, and strong committed partnerships to make this happen. In 2016, after the Super Bowl and the outreach campaigns, councilwomen Gallego and Williams asked me to look at the possibility of housing survivors like we do other special populations. Both councilwomen were concerned about what happened to the victims after they exited the life. Where do they live? How do they get their children back? How do they support themselves? After learning more about human trafficking, it seemed like a good opportunity for a new kind of permanent supportive housing. Housing staff was excited about this opportunity, and the timing was perfect because we knew of a small property that was currently vacant. The project was so compelling that we had no problems finding partners to help with almost every aspect of this project: neighborhood services. I helped identify funding for the purchase of the property and the supportive services that would be needed. We also benefited from generous donations, including from Cindy McCain and Nancy Baldwin, who are here with us today. Thank you. Other donors included the Rotary Club, U-Haul, and Lisa Sleep. These donations provided furniture, home goods, and amenities for the residents. The city law department worked very quickly on the acquisition and ownership structure of the property. Housing staff identified rental assistance for the residents and brought on a property manager, Dunlap &amp; McGee, who was already experienced with housing special populations. We brought on two full-time caseworkers from Community Bridges, and their contract is managed by the Human Services Department. But the most important and crucial part of supportive housing is the service model. This was a new population for permanent supportive housing, and there was no model for supporting human trafficking survivors. For that, we needed an expert, so we partnered with Dr. Dominique Rosepowitz from ASU's Office of Sex Trafficking Intervention Research. Dominique identified the sanctuary model as best suited for this project. Then she designed the services for Phoenix Starfish Place, created a referral and application process, and trained all of us, including me, my staff, our property managers, human services staff, and the Community Bridges caseworkers. We held our grand opening on November 3, 2017, with many distinguished guests, including Mayor Stanton, Councilman Waring, and Councilwoman Stark. There was one very special guest speaker who was able to communicate the true impact of Phoenix Starfish Place.
Hi, I'm Lois Lucas, and I am a survivor. I am so honored and excited to be here today to help celebrate the grand opening of the Starfish Place. This is a magic place with love, support, and encouragement built right in. So like I said, I'm a survivor. I did live that life for a long time. I now work in the field, and after one-year recovery at the Dignity House, I was chosen to come onboard as a case manager for the prostitution diversion program for the city of Phoenix. So now I've been in the field 10 years, and I believe that a special apartment complex like this has been the missing link for a long time here in Phoenix. Now that void is filled with a safe, secure place for these troubled families to heal, change, and grow. If something like this would have been available for me 12 years ago, when I needed help, my story may have been completely different.
Dominique's sanctuary model tailors all of our services specifically for the trauma experienced by persons who have been trafficked. Dominique, her ASU staff, who are all lined up behind us here, and the Community Bridges caseworkers provide the onsite support, including individual case management, life skills, and group therapy. Other classes include parenting and nurturing, health and wellness, and cooking classes. The support extends to the children at Starfish. They all receive trauma therapy and assistance with school and healthcare. At the launch of Phoenix Starfish Place, ASU allocated $50,000 to allow Dominique's office to officially track the outcomes for this new model. All residents partake in a series of surveys at regular intervals to document their progress. Thanks to this, we know that the resident's readiness to change increases at three months, their trauma symptoms start to decrease at six months, and their self-esteem increases within six months and continues to increase after that. I am very excited about the research part of this program because it's the first Phoenix housing program that has been academically evaluated to show tangible results from permanent supportive housing. We currently have 15 survivors and 27 children living safely and comfortably at Phoenix Starfish Place. This is a very innovative, one-of-a-kind housing project that many industry experts are interested in. Dominique and I were selected to present together at last year's International Sex Trafficking Conference in Toledo, Ohio, and last October, we hosted the President's Human Trafficking Council for a tour. The council were so impressed, they said it would be a model for the nation. I will now turn it over to Dominique to talk about other wonderful things that she's doing.
Turn it on. I want to tell you a little bit about some of the programs that we offer in partnership with the city. I want to really make a note that partnering between a university and a city can have incredible value, bringing innovation and energy and enthusiasm. And true partnership has been something that has really changed my life and my career and the work that we do, and certainly for the clients that we serve, has been really something to speak to. We do something, we've been doing the Phoenix First Step Drop-In Center for the last five years. We've had 10 events. It's a one-day event where we work with 30 different organizations that do like a social service fair for prostituted and sex-trafficked persons. On 27th Avenue, we use a senior center, and it is the only one of its kind in the country, and it came from wanting to do something different for the Super Bowl. We wanted to make sure that people who are being prostituted and trafficked had an opportunity for change. Since the beginning, we have had 1,148 volunteers. We've worked with 354 survivors, and it is a survivor-led program. When you walk in the door, you see some of our beautiful survivors who are in the audience here who really help lead it. At that program, we provide housing opportunities, medical and mental health, Hep C, HIV testing, drug and alcohol treatment through our partners. We, of course, are evaluating that as well, and it has shown incredible change. We are on our sixth year of working with our community on the Youth Experiences Survey. We are surveying 18- to 25-year-old youth in the Arizona community. It's a paper and pencil survey. We give a $5 gift card for all participants, and we participate with 1 in 10. Our family services in Tucson, Native American Connections, and U-Mom, who has partnered, who was tumbleweed. In our sixth study in 2019, we had 167 participants from Tucson and Phoenix, and sadly, 38.9% of them identified as experiencing sex trafficking. So we are seeing a tremendous amount of sex trafficking continue in our community. We know these youth, 18 to 25, are at particular risk. We had 60% of those who identified as sex trafficked were trafficked before they turned 18. The average age of sex trafficking from that population as a child, if they were trafficked under the age of 18, was 14. We also spend a lot of time training and talking. You can see that's very comfortable for me. We have done a number of trainings in the community. We do Sex Trafficking 101, which is a trauma-informed training. We do the Safe Action Project. We participate with that, the ProjectStarfish.edu curriculum, and support law enforcement training. So with Sex Trafficking 101, we have provided over the last, since 2016, in partnership with the city of Phoenix, we've trained about 10,000 community members, including special education teachers, which is a specific focus for us. We find about 22% of the sex trafficking victims that identify in our research being in special ed classrooms. We've worked with correctional and detention officers through a new initiative with the McCain Institute and the sheriff. We are training clinicians, judges, the labor trafficking community, group home staff, and child welfare workers. In 2019, we trained 1,433 people. The Safe Action Project is a wonderful program. It's under the umbrella of Trust, currently in AATN, and that is working with, also with the task force, and they are training people in the hospitality and tourism industry. It's an innovative technique to try to talk to tourism and hospitality industries to look out for victims. Years ago, we started talking about what a hotel room might look like if a victim was found in it, and they took all of that information and created a really great structured, well-organized project that they're doing nationwide, but it's sourced here. Project Starfish Education is a curriculum that we developed in partnership with the McCain Institute. It is an online free website, and I'm speaking to the U.S. Department of Education on a webinar tomorrow on Thursday. And this is a prevention website for trafficking, so schools can teach their teachers, their special ed teachers, their counselors, their school nurses. And it's not for the children, it's for the teachers and going down. We presented this with the city of Phoenix Human Services, with the School Resource Officers in 2008, and we continue to work with school superintendents, social workers, and school resource officers now. Law enforcement in the city of Phoenix regarding human trafficking, there is an AZ post certification training that is provided in in-service format in the Law Enforcement Academy. All new hires are trained, and there is precinct-level training. I'm now going to pass this over to another partner of ours, which is Commander Jim Gallagher.
Thank you. Phoenix Police Department recognizes the inherent dignity of all victims of sex trafficking and the absolute necessity to hold equally responsible those who traffic them and those who solicit their commercial sexual services. Phoenix PD has embraced a holistic approach to this very complex problem with a focus on law enforcement and collaborations with our law enforcement and prosecutorial partners throughout the valley, amended Phoenix City Codes to give us additional resources to address this problem in our community, conducted numerous special operations that have been very impactful and had the effect of rescuing victims and holding the criminals accountable. And then we are especially proud to talk about the frontline documentary that we will be seeing a preview of shortly that documents all that we've done as a department. The Phoenix Police Department occupies the center of the fight against human trafficking in the valley. The Phoenix Police Department Human Exploitation and Trafficking Unit, formerly known as the VICE Unit, and our federal partners, the FBI and the Homeland Security Investigations, engage in a number of short and long-term investigations designed to impact this problem. Partnering with our prosecutorial agencies, the Arizona Attorney General's Office and the Maricopa County Attorney's Office, we're able to prosecute each of these suspects and hold them fully accountable to the extent of the law. And we also are very fortunate to have exceptional partnerships with our regional law enforcement partners, both in the East and West Valley. We've provided training to each of these departments about some of the operational lessons that we've learned over the last several years, and they in turn are able to conduct investigations within their own communities. The Phoenix Police Department, the Arizona Department of Child Safety, and regional behavioral health partners work together to reform the response to child sex trafficking victims. Children victims who were confirmed to have been trafficked are now immediately provided with specialized services upon being recovered by law enforcement. This new protocol is widely considered to be the first of its kind in the country and extremely successful. Because of our partnerships, both in law enforcement and community and within the community at large, we've been able to conduct very successful investigations and recognize some very significant sentences in partnership with our prosecutorial partners. For example, in 2016, we were able to achieve a sentence of 493 and 1/2 years, which is considered to be the longest sex trafficking sentence ever documented in the United States. Subsequent sentences that we've received over the last several years are no less than 188 years, with the most recent one being 354 years. Phoenix City Codes were amended in 2017 to include mandatory booking for those who solicit sex. The defendant's vehicle is subject to impound by the Phoenix Police Department when it is used to transport a person for the purposes of soliciting or engaging in an act of prostitution. These amendments impose an increased fine on sex buyers for second, third, and fourth convictions, and an educational component was imposed as part of mandatory sentencing for violations. Former NFL player Warren Sapp was the first person to be booked for these charges during our Super Bowl. Among numerous successful operations that we have taken is Operation Paradise HEAT. During this time, we had 86 men arrested for soliciting prostitution, 28 who arrived but chose to walk out, showing still an increasing demand in the community, and we towed 61 vehicles. From 2017 on, our HEAT unit has authored 2,298 reports documenting human and sex trafficking investigations, and during that same time, we have arrested 714 people, booking 534 of them, or nearly 75% during that time. Because of the attention that the chief has given this issue, we've provided training to our department throughout the patrol precincts. Our citywide arrests have gone up to 1,369. 655 of these are made by patrol. Of those numbered, 1,011 were booked, again, almost 75%. And in the last year alone, we have successfully recovered 13 juvenile sex trafficking victims and have referred them to services. As we mentioned, we were recently the subject of a frontline documentary from PBS. This captured some of the lessons and some of the great successes that we've had in our community. And Zach, if you could play that, so the council can see it.
Sex trafficking in America.
What happened to me? Could happen to anyone.
For over two years, frontline embedded with a special police unit.
Without customers, there's no girls out there.
Our work is constantly evolving.
Technology has given a superhighway for traffickers to vulnerable victims.
From the streets to the courts.
It's difficult to think of something more despicable than that. You and your co-defendants preyed on a child.
The complete documentary is available on pbs.org if the council wishes to see more of it. And now I'm going to turn this over to our county attorney, Ms. Adele, for closing comments.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members. I'm honored to be here as your county attorney. I do want to echo the comments made by Cindy on the Starfish Place. It was such an honor when I was president of Phoenix Rotary 100 to partner with the city and your staff to be able to create a fellowship space and butterfly garden at that absolutely wonderful facility. It's partnerships like this that are absolutely critical for all of us. At the county attorney's office, where I've been now for about four months, it's been such an honor, we have three dedicated prosecutors strictly for sex trafficking. such an honor, we have three dedicated prosecutors strictly for sex trafficking. Our Victim Services Division is very robust. We are with the victims and survivors throughout the duration of their case to provide guidance, to connect them with outside resources, and also to provide comfort should they need to go to trial or have a trying interview with our K-9 Assistance Unit. Twenty nineteen calendar year, under ARS thirteen thirty-two twelve, the child sex trafficking statute, we filed nineteen cases consisting of forty-seven total charges. Calendar year twenty nineteen for ARS thirteen thirty, excuse me, thirteen thirteen oh seven sex trafficking, we filed eleven cases totaling twelve charges. As the third-largest prosecution agency in the country and the fourth-largest county, we are honored to work alongside other offices and stakeholders because we know we have a duty to be proactive on this issue. We're working to keep families safe even before they come into the system. Our prosecutors are out in the community providing education and training on warning signs of sex trafficking and how we, as parents and community members, can protect children from falling victim to predators. Our prosecutors go out and talk about some of the latest trends that we're seeing that we're all unfortunately aware of, such as signs that a young person is being trafficked, like finding extra money, more cell phones in their possession, or they're hanging out with a new friend or boyfriend. The prosecutors in our Sex Crimes Bureau, who specialize in child trafficking cases, provide presentations to law enforcement and other first responders, teachers, nurses, advocates, and other government agencies on how to spot signs and how to handle the situation if someone is being trafficked. The county attorney's office is committed to work in this space along with our other key stakeholders in a collaborative manner. We are exploring the possibility of using some of our RICO funds to support programs that combat trafficking, raise awareness, and support our victims and our survivors. And I'm proud to say that last week, our office participated in the Red Sand Project to raise awareness of human trafficking in our community outside our new building, two two five West Madison, which is formerly the Madison Street Jail. Commander Gallagher had mentioned a case where the defendant was sentenced to three hundred and fifty-four years, and I'd like to share a little bit more about that case with you. DeAndre James was sentenced on September twelfth of twenty nineteen to three hundred and fifty-four years in the Department of Corrections after being found guilty on all nineteen counts. Fourteen of those counts were child prostitution, two counts of sexual conduct with a minor, and one count each of child sex trafficking, custodial interference, and involving minors in a drug offense. Between March and September of twenty fifteen, the defendant convinced a fifteen-year-old victim to work as a prostitute for him, requiring her to give him half of all her money that she made performing sex acts with men the defendant had arranged for her to meet. During the same time, the defendant was also having sex with the minor victim. During a visit out of state, authorities found the victim, who had been given drugs by the defendant, and transported her back to Phoenix, where she stayed in a group home. The victim was convinced by the defendant to leave the group home and come back to working as a prostitute for him. This time joining a seventeen-year-old girl, the defendant was also trying to recruit to work as a prostitute. Investigators looking into sex trafficking were able to start a conversation with the younger victim, who had just turned sixteen years old. She eventually admitted to working for the defendant, and when he was arrested and interviewed by police, he told them he believed the sixteen-year-old girl was actually eighteen and admitted having sex with her, yet he continually denied any part in prostitution. This is an example of the hard work by law enforcement and prosecutors in this field to ensure this defendant and many others never prey upon anyone else ever again. The county attorney's office is committed to holding traffickers accountable, protecting victims and survivors, and partnering with the city and other stakeholders in this arena. Thank you.
Mayor, members of the council, this concludes our presentation, and we're happy to answer any questions.
Mayor?
Councilman Deeseal.
Oh, thank you, Mayor, for that, and I want to give special thanks. I mean, you know, things are not a priority until you make them a priority, and to our colleague Jim Waring, he has made this a priority. I don't think there's a week or a day that goes by he doesn't talk about the importance of this issue. I want to thank Cindy McCain. Cindy, thank you for all that you do for our community. It's, and I think you're probably one of the first, if the first, to bring this to a higher level. I think it's just incredibly sick what's happening in our community, and if people don't realize the extent of this. I mean, these are children primarily that are taken, and their lives are completely ruined. You're talking about lives that get ruined, and we would never accept this for anybody, let alone we should be not accepting this in our community. And to say that no is it, it's not usually enough, and that's why we're lucky to have County Attorney Adele here. I mean, she has made this a priority, and these individuals need to be told more than no. They need to be told that they're going to be going to jail, and that's what County Attorney Adele is doing. She's telling them, you're going to jail. You're not going to make it through this, and we're going to make this as a priority. You're not going to get a plea bargain, you're going to be done. And so this is a sickness, and it's a disease that's in our community, and like any other sickness or disease, it needs to be wiped out. It needs to be taken out in a way that it's made very clear to everybody, you are not going to ruin any lives, you're not going to destroy our community, and it's a stain on all of us for every single person that's there. And until one, every single person is safe, none of, nobody is safe in our community. And so I want to give special thanks to everybody. I know that there are others that are out there, and especially those people that work on this day-to-day, those are the ones, they are the heroes of our community. Every one of you are, and we're blessed by God to have you in our community and to be able to be doing this to protect those that cannot protect themselves. That's all I've got to say, Mayor, and thank you for everything that you do.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you all so much for the work. One of the gaps I see in it, and I think we've talked about it with staff, is more support services for the folks, and also want to first speak to undocumented victims of trafficking, and just reminding staff how important the T and U visas are in that process. We currently have an eight-month backlog in that process, and I think we need to do better by these folks. I heard a little bit of, and I wanted to just clarify with some of the arrest numbers of sex trafficking versus soliciting prostitution, and kind of how we look at those differently. And I see, and how you've intensified enforcement with solicitors, but also curious to know how have we, I don't want to say weakened, but how have we lessened or given diversion or given different options for folks that we know are vulnerable and are being exploited in this process, and making sure that we're also not just criminalizing them and throwing them away instead of supporting them?
Mayor, Councilmember Garcia, I'd like to answer that question by explaining our new robust diversion program at the county attorney's office that we just implemented beginning April thirteenth. We will have a more robust diversion program that is eliminating a financial barrier that was once there. Previously, the county attorney's office charged a six hundred and thirty-dollar fee just to participate in diversion. We eliminated that barrier. We have also switched providers so that we have evidence-based practices, curriculum that is actually going to help people get back and working and isn't disrupting school, family, employment. We are looking at a new model at the county attorney's office of treating the offender, not just the offense, because we're keenly aware that sometimes these victims and survivors can be arrested for things that are, have nothing necessarily to do with what the underlying issue is. These people will go into a diversion if they're eligible, they have to want to participate in the program, and if they do, and it's a low-level, nonviolent type of offense, they will be assessed by a service provider with their criminogenic needs. Do they need cognitive therapy? Do they have a drug addiction? And we want to make sure that we're getting them the services that they need so that they can be successful. Now, like I said, we're evaluating the offender, not the offense. Violent offenses will not be captured into our diversion program, but I'm happy to share with you that this is a different direction for the county attorney's office, and hopefully we will be able to service the needs of some of these populations. Thank you.
Mayor Gallego, Councilman Garcia, members of the council, to answer the initial question, so we can separate the number of arrests based upon demand and trafficking misdemeanor versus felony, we can provide that information to staff for your review. With regards to the way that we engage with certain populations in our community, one of the key platforms of our unit is to go out and do education and outreach, and we're very fortunate in our unit to have two detectives who were born in Mexico that have credibility, they have a native fluency in Spanish. So we go out and we try to engage with members of this community and let them know that first and foremost, we're a victim-centered unit. We begin with the presumption that they are victims and they require our combined services, both from law enforcement and prosecution. We do work with refugee immigrant service organizations like the IRC to help us navigate the situation that you referred to with regards to the backlog with TNU visas. All in all, what we do is we try to provide a service, we try not to criminalize a social condition, and then we take it as far as we can, we make our pass off to our victim services agencies. That kind of fills that gap period between arrest and prosecution, and then post-prosecution. We try to do a more wraparound service model with the rest of the partners that we work with, both within the city and outside the city.
Vice Mayor?
First out, I want to say thank you so much for this presentation. I believe that the frontline, some of the frontline documentary was in my district, was in District Five, so thank you so much for Councilman Waring, for all the work that you've, that you've put into this. This is incredibly important for the, for the, for the whole city, but definitely in the west side, we see a lot of what's going on. And as a mom, I cannot even bear to understand what, what some of these children are going through, and could not even imagine my children going through something like this. So definitely something that's incredibly, incredibly important, and hoping to be, continue to be part of the conversations on what is it that we're doing with a lot of the victims, and how do we get them back on their feet, and making sure that we're giving them, giving them the services that they need in order to be able, you know, to, to get back into society and living a good, normal life. Thank you, thank you so much for all.
Councilman Waring.
Learn how to turn on the microphone. Thank you. Just to touch on something that a couple council members have said. First, to Councilman Garcia's point, and it's an excellent one because it wasn't as delineated as clearly during the presentation, when we talk about increasing penalties, we're not increasing them on what I perceive, and I think a lot of people rightly perceive as the victims, but it's on the Johns. Warren Sapp was mentioned, but he was singled out. It's not just him, there's plenty of others, or there wouldn't be a market for the human trafficking that takes place. So we'll touch on that in a second. But if I had, if I was asking you guys or the public or, you know, people at home watching this, you know, what would I take away from this? We're trying to increase penalties and make it as uncomfortable and unpleasant as possible for people who are trying to purchase sex from, from young people predominantly. That is unacceptable in Phoenix, and I think Sal also raised that point, we're going to make it really hurt if we catch you here doing it, and I think you saw some of the advertising that was put together emphasize that point. Starfish Place, that should be a point of pride for Phoenix, period. Cindy Stotler and her team and Tamara, we were working together on the committee. I mean, to put that together, I think at the time, there was debate about whether it was the first of its kind in the world. There are plenty of providers, so I don't want to single anybody out who are here or presumably probably watching this at home, who have provided locations for, for single, predominantly young women who have fallen into this life largely through maybe no fault of their own economic circumstance, I think was the phrase that was mentioned. But Starfish Place provided a place for families. A lot of these people have kids, and there's just, what do you do? Right? I mean, so we, you know, by hook or by crook, and there was a lot of machinations that went through it, but as Cindy pointed out, it went fast as these things go in government work, and I really think it's incredible that we have that facility. I wish more was known about it. I wish we could advertise it more, but of course you don't want to tell everybody where it is, so I have to leave it to it's just in District Three and leave it at that, but I think it's fantastic that that program is up and running, and the private sector participation in putting the rooms together and the furniture. You mentioned some of the companies. Again, I don't want to forget anybody and single anybody out, but I think that's just fantastic. I have had people at my gym who have heard about it, who have said, hey, I'm moving out of town, or I had a business, can you take furniture? We've had those discussions, sometimes that gets complicated if it's the right stuff. But the fact that that has actually spread, and I'm hearing about it out in the world, I think is fantastic. We've raised awareness. I talked about Cindy McCain's role in that, but we've really tried to accelerate that here in Phoenix, and our partners in that were mentioned, and I think that's a fantastic thing. But one thing that wasn't really mentioned, Commander Gallagher and his team, a lot of big cities don't even have what's traditionally been called a vice unit. We call it the heat, but, but a vice unit to even address this, and Phoenix does. We've made it a priority where a lot of big cities around the country are going the other way, and I'm not going to criticize our sister cities, but I think that we've been a leader that folks like those at frontline and others are looking to us, but I know you get calls all the time from other cities about what are you guys doing out there? It is generally recognized, and that is a reflection on our department and our chief. So I just want to thank them for their work, because a lot of cities aren't doing that at all, and so that might not be generally known, and I think is an important point. I'd also like to thank the current Attorney General, Mark Bernovich, who I did not know at all when he got elected, which was almost exactly the time that we started this committee, and Cindy, I think we'll remember, Cindy McCain will remember, he dove right in on this issue. I didn't know his background, he'd been a prosecutor, and he really jumped right in with both feet and made this a priority, and I appreciated that very much, and Bill Montgomery, Alister's predecessor, in prosecuting these cases, because we can bring cases, but they're generally very complicated. It's the county attorney's staff who's got to sort it out and bring the kind of convictions that will resonate, I hate to call it a community, but among the criminal element that is bringing these cases, maybe you need to move on somewhere else, you know, because we're going to, you talked about some of the sentences, we've had a lot of discussion about that at our committee, and those are complicated cases, though, and it takes a lot of police work, and our department does an excellent job, but it takes somebody else to back it up to actually prosecute the cases. I want to speak to something that Sal mentioned. He used the word sick, and I guess all I would ask, speaking to anybody at home who might be engaging in this activity, what in the world are you thinking? It is absolutely, I think, one of the judges in the frontline thinks that it's just disgusting and abhorrent, to paraphrase. These are mostly, and I think Sal raised that point as well, and it's true, these are kids, or if they're not kids now, they were kids when they started. I think Dominique Rosipulitz's research at ASU will bear that out. I just, think about that as if it was your daughter or neighbor next door. I mean, what are you thinking? A lot of these cases involve underage people. We had, and I was really, I'm not the most emotional person, as you guys know, but I will tell you, we had a victim, we had quite a few victims, but we had one victim that really stood out, and she's doing very well, she's in her forties, she's got a family now, which is amazing, overcome more than I could ever have overcome, but she talked about her experiences, and then she said, and I was fourteen. I mean, horrifying things that you might expect to hear maybe in some other country that you'd never want to visit or something, not the United States, and it was amazing what she was saying, and she's like, what were those adults thinking? Some of whom were relatives, I was fourteen. And I think about what I was doing at fourteen, that's basically a high school freshman, right? Football practice and so forth. So if you're out there and you're thinking, this is like Pretty Woman or some other movie where people are picking this as a profession, nobody picks a profession at fourteen, except maybe a professional tennis player or something, certainly not this. This isn't something that people chose, the Commander Gallagher's point, this is economic circumstances and, you know, bad family relations or what have you, and to have this be the result, that they gotta be with a scumbag like you, that's just not acceptable. Somebody who's engaging this needs to take a long, cold, hard-looking mirror. We talked a lot about the Super Bowl, and generally speaking, there's big events, conventions, and so forth, not fair to single out one particular activity. Unfortunately, that may have started some of the interest in this, but by and large, that's not true. This is a day-to-day activity in our city, and it's hard for me to accept, which again, I think, I don't want to steal Sal's thunder, but I mean, I think paraphrases some of the things that he said, you know, and I would just hope our citizens, and we were very happy to get the sports teams, Kurt Warner was mentioned, but all the sports teams participated and ran public service announcements and so forth at their games, to try to get, because this is largely, you know, male-dominated criminal activity, unfortunately, I'm embarrassed to say that, but it's true, you know, to try to get people to think and reflect on their behavior, because if you can reduce demand, and we've run whole programs on that, then, then there is no need to be trafficking in people, because there's no, and I hate to use a term like this, but there's no market for it, so you don't need to have that. But just, I would hope that's what we're trying to accomplish, so if I had to encapsulate, I think that's our goal. We're trying to prevent this, this abhorrent day-to-day activity, and I appreciate the support of the two mayors, and then also obviously the council members to make this happen. Can't, can't thank the folks sitting in front of you enough, but I, I wish we had time for more because there's so many more people who work on this day-to-day, who have so much to offer. We have tried to bring in a cross-section, there may be all appointments, but we've tried to, to have a cross-section. tried to have a cross-section of education. The hotel industry has really worked with us and had a representative. Obviously, the governor's office has its task force on which I serve, and Phoenix Police Officers have served. But, long story short, this is a continuing fight, but it is one we are going to engage in. And if you're doing this and you're watching this by any chance at home, stop before we catch you, because we're going to make it hurt if we do. And I think that is appropriate and just. So, thank you for the time, Mayor. I appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you to our entire team who's been involved with this, our two chairs who have really led the way. But our city staff has stepped up in a big way. It is a credit to us that when the federal task force looked at one community to visit, they felt Phoenix is the one that was leading with solutions. I have heard people talk about Starfish Place all over the country and wanting to replicate it, most importantly, because of the results we're getting. So, thank you to Dominique Rosipowicz for giving us the data to tell that story. It is great to be there and to see moms and kids who are thriving and to hear stories about new economic opportunities. So, trafficking was a chapter, but life goes on and we are a community where you can, you can overcome and you can succeed. That is the Phoenix way and a credit. Thank you to Nancy Baldwin for convening so many of us and bringing together other communities and helping the lessons that we have learned rise. We still have work to do, but today really is a recognition of all of you who have put Phoenix in a leading light. So, thank you for your service to the city and to our entire country.
Councilwoman Pastor?
So, I really appreciate your work because you're dealing with humans. You're dealing with lives. And really, in this world, in that space, it really starts at 10 and moves on up, and it depends on where, what is happening. But I'm very grateful that people are willing to take, enter that space to help others, because it takes a village to really help those that are in that network. Takes a lot of resources, time and money, because basically, they're experiencing trauma. And I look at it and I relate it to PTSD. And it's a traumatic incident. And in a traumatic incident, it doesn't go away. It continues throughout your life. You have to learn how to cope with it. You have to learn what triggers it, and you have to learn how to talk about it. And so, it requires a lot of patience, really requires a lot of love and understanding on how they move themselves forward and really compassion. So, I appreciate the work. I appreciate that Councilman Waring has taken the lead on this and has really moved it forward and made it more of a national conversation, because the Super Bowl travels everywhere. But I don't think it's just the Super Bowl. I think it's just now, it was focused in that area and people, awareness started. But I think it's in any event or arena, and it happens. What I do know is that it also, doesn't matter what faith, ethnicity, economic status you're from, it can happen to anybody. And I do know that only because I work closely with the Dream Center. And the Dream Center, very similar to Starfish Place, has an area or space for those that are, have been trafficked. I also know that we're seeing more and more boys being trafficked. And so, that's now, to me, another, not that it's any different for any, but it's statistically, what is happening and why is it happening? And so, that'll be interesting, Dawn, to look at that and see what, yeah, please.
So, we have a little bit of knowledge about boys and men. In our research, we find that the initial step is to help people identify what it is that happened to them. And I think that we, as a community, in the very beginning, when we started surveying our homeless young people, that there wasn't an understanding among the service providers about what trafficking was, that there was still a conversation about survival sex or other types of sort of dismissive ideas about that. And over the years, we've trained so many service providers that as we are working with more and more victims, the victims seem to be more educated about the language of their experience. And we don't think more boys are being trafficked. We think more boys are self-identifying as this type of victim. So, consistently, it's about 23% of our population of young people that we survey. And that's been over, it's increased over time because we've, I believe, we've done such a good job that their caseworkers are talking to them, they have flyers in their offices, they're more aware that this is happening. So, we think that that's part of that phenomenon about the city really being engaged, that people are talking about it more and victims are more easily able to raise their hand and say, oh, that is what happened to me, that's what you call it. So, that is, that is sort of what we understand from the research side.
There's really more awareness of what's happening. Well, I really appreciate everything and I appreciate what we're doing. This is for Commander Gallagher. There are three districts that share a certain street, a certain avenue. It's known, called the Circuit, and it's known nationally. And what I would like to do, and I know police have been working on this for 25 years, but in my tenure, what I would like to do is that the Circuit no longer exists. And we know on the Circuit, those that are there are probably being trafficked. And so, I would like to make a commitment to work with law enforcement on figuring out how we break the Circuit. And I'm just not saying where and what space, but I believe you know what I'm talking about.
Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. Unfortunately, I know what you're talking about. Commander Gallagher, you have been at this a very long time. I can remember, it's been a while ago, when a young woman was found under a bed in a box, and you did a presentation on it. But I want to say how proud I am to be in a city that Cindy, you and Jim, and everybody at that table has taken this on as a real challenge. You're a leader in the world, and I think it is an accomplishment of what you've done so far that you should be so proud of, because you are saving lives and making a difference. So, I just want to thank all of you and all of you in the audience that are participating in this program. Thank you.
Councilwoman Garcia?
One thing I forgot to talk about is, I know you mentioned 1 in 10, but I think there's a lot of LGBTQ youth that have gone through this, and particularly trans youth. So, just a little bit more on, I would say, is there specific programming and knowledge of, or awareness of that community and support?
In our work, one of the things that we do at ASU is we capacity build. So, we do research and we identify a problem, and then we try to find ways to build capacity to support it. And that's what all these partnerships are. So, one of the things that we do is we've created a psychoeducation program, a group that can be offered in almost any setting. I currently do it at the Estrella Jail with incarcerated women in the Mosaic Program. We've done it at our prostitution diversion. We've done it at Dignity House, which was an exiting program for trafficked women. And we've taught about 21 different organizations around Arizona how to do it, one of them being 1 in 10. So, they're partnering with Phoenix Children's Hospital and a bunch of different organizations to identify LGBTQ youth and provide them with the STAR Group. In our homeless runaway youth data, about 56% of the kids that identify as being trafficked also identified as LGBTQ. So, we don't know what makes that person more vulnerable. We don't, we have really looked at them getting kicked out of the home because of their sexual orientation. We've looked at some of the other pieces, and we can't really figure it out. We are, we're working hard to understand more. We think some of it is that there's, because kids are coming from homes without a lot of background about LGBTQ issues, maybe their naivety is being accessed and they're being tricked and coerced in different ways. We know that the market for LGBTQ youth can look different than maybe on some of our busier street prostitution areas. We know there are online venues that are much more vulnerable. So, maybe someone goes on who's LGBTQ and is looking for a date, like a dating site, and that's how they're recruited. So, we are paying quite close attention. Our best partnership right now is 1 in 10 and our Family Services, who both pay strong attention to LGBTQ youth. But we, we still don't have a lot of answers, but please know that we're paying attention.
Thank you. Thank you so much for joining us today and for this important panel. We really appreciate your service. I'm going to give our panelists a minute to get up, and then we will turn to council member requests for information and announcements. We will now turn to council member announcements and requests for information. Councilwoman Stark?
Thank you, Mayor. On February 8th, Desert Mission Food Bank is putting on a wellness event called Heart of Sunny Slope. They will have free health screenings for adults, free dental screens for kids, and free fresh vegetables, free bike rides and helmets. There'll be music and entertainment, and the event will be on Fifth Street and Hatcher from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Also, on our next District Three Monthly Community Chat, it will be held on February 20th at 6:00 p.m. at the Sunny Slope Community Center. We're going to be talking about the 2020 Census. This is very important to us. It's important to our city. We need to get an accurate count. So, we'll be there with lots of good information, and we will provide all the information bilingually, and hopefully, we'll have a great attendance. Again, our Census 2020 is so important to our city.
Thank you, Councilwoman, and I couldn't agree more about the Census, which is coming up soon. Councilwoman Williams?
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, we have our Solid Waste Rate Change Proposal BD. It's at the Helen Drake Center. It's at 6:30, and if you live in that area or elsewhere, you are definitely invited, and I hope you come to participate. This Friday morning is the District One Breakfast Meeting, and we're going to have Albert Santana there to tell everyone about the Census 2020 and how important it is that everybody and every family is counted. And we're also going to have Jeff come and talk about his new app on how to participate in planning the city's budget. So, we're very excited, and that's at Metro Center at the Hotel at 7:30 a.m. Breakfast is on me, so please come.
Thank you. Councilmember Garcia?
Taking off on that note, I want to thank Jeff for hanging out with this one. This last weekend, we had our Budgets and Bagels in the Garfield District. They went great, great participation. And I wanted to announce our second event of that like, which would be Budget and Breakfast this time. We're going to be on February 8th from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Gateway Community College. That's at Washington Campus on 108 North 40th Street. I'd like to invite folks to come out and talk budget with us. We are also having this Thursday, Solid Waste Community Meeting at the South Mountain Community Center. That's at 212 East Alta Vista from 6:30 to 8:00 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Yes, good afternoon. Thank you, Mayor. So, I am extremely excited to announce that tomorrow at 5:15, Cartwright Elementary School District is going to be hosting and doing their rib cutting at 3818 North 67th Avenue. And this is a place where they are going to offer free daycare for the children of the different people that work in the Cartwright School District. I want to thank the governing board, Cartwright Governing Board, President Marisa Hernandez and Vice President Denise Garcia for their leadership and ensuring that our teachers and support staff have access to high-quality, affordable childcare. As a mom, I know how incredibly important it is to be able to not have to think about where you're going to leave your children, or maybe even sometimes how you're going to pay for childcare. So, I am extremely proud that this is happening in the heart of Maryvale and that the educators and the staff and the Cartwright School District are now going to be supported with having daycare for their, for their own children as well. And also, I would love to invite everyone Coffee with a Congressman event that we are going to be hosting with Congressman Ruben Gallego on Saturday, starting at 10:00 a.m. at the Maryvale Community Center. We will be there to listen to constituents, questions, concerns, both at the local and federal level. We will also have District Five staff and public work staff to continue to talk about our different options with recycling. And definitely, we'll be doing a lot more surveys that day. Lastly, I, this is something that blew my mind when I saw the pictures. I would like to give a huge shout out and thanks to the members of Neighborhood Services Department. They had a huge task under, in their hands the last couple of weeks on West Columbus and 64th Avenue. Over three days, NSD employees removed 67 tons of trash and 16 unoperable vehicles from a single-family residential property. It was an incredible effort, and I am so proud, thankful to everyone that was involved in this, especially our Neighborhood Specialist Fernando Felix and all the neighbors that came together to make this happen. Thanks so much to the constituents that reported this. I know that it was, it was not something easy for them to deal with this day in and day out, but we finally, finally were able to deal with it, and I am very thankful for all the work and everyone that came together to come for a great solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Really, congratulations Neighborhood Services. That was an impressive feat, and the community really appreciates it. Councilwoman Pastor?
Thank you, thank you. I just want to say, we had a great event on January 18th at Hope's Crossing. And Hope's Crossing is an organization that helps women after they've been released from prison. We had 60 women participate and attend, and everyone went home with a gift bag with many essentials that are needed in the community or that they need. I'm proud to say that since the event, three women have secured a job and two women have received tutoring, because they went back to school in order to pass their algebra class, and will be graduating from Phoenix College soon. And then, four of the women actually joined the program at Hope's Crossing. So, it was very successful. I want to thank Sapin and Jody Liggett from the mayor's office for providing items that were needed in order to give them the gift bag. So, I really appreciate the support from the mayor's office. And then, tomorrow at 1:00 p.m., in my office, I will be hosting a small press conference and reception to unveil the wall mural that has been done in my office that reflects the district and the great projects that we have worked on throughout our community. And anybody's invited, you're invited if you want to come, because it'll be unveiled. And it definitely represents the community that I represent. So, I'm really appreciative of the work that the artists, of local artists have done that I paid for. And then, finally, February 9th, I'll be attending the 1 in 10 Fresh Brunch. 1 in 10 helps LGBTQ youth, and I'm honored to be part of this organization. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Happy Chinese New Year.
Busy time in the city of Phoenix. I want to thank our city employees who are working together with the county and state to make sure that we all stay healthy. We have seen there has been one case of novel coronavirus in Maricopa County. It appears that the person traveled to Wuhan, China, is now in isolation, and we understand low risk of transmission. But we have been working together across multiple levels of government to make sure that we coordinate, that we keep people safe. It is a tough flu season to begin with. Our emergency rooms are busy with flu patients with the traditional strands, and so, it's important that everyone stays safe. But want to thank our fire department, who's making sure they get the training and information out there, as well as our whole emergency response infrastructure busy season. With that, we are going to take a short break. We will re-
Hey, Mayor.
Oh, Councilman Noakowski.
Sorry about that, Mayor. Hey, Mayor, I just want to really thank everybody that went out to the MLK. What a great celebration, what a great march. Every year gets larger and larger, but one thing I forgot to tell everyone is to thank you and all the individuals that worked hard to get that Martin Luther King Boulevard down in South Phoenix on Broadway Road. It looks great, and a lot of people are enjoying that Martin Luther King Boulevard. The other thing, too, is that this Saturday, we have the Levine Parade. So if you live out in Levine, right around 43rd and Dobbin, come on out. It's going to be a great celebration. It's a parade. We have all the community coming out, and that's at 11 o'clock on this Saturday. Also, the following week, on February eighth, we're going to have the Levine Famous Barbecue. Come on out. It's at Caesar Chavez Park, right there on 35th and Baseline, and it's from 11 o'clock to 4:00 p.m. Come taste some of the best barbecue in the city. And also tonight, if you live on Third Avenue or Fifth Avenue, we're going to be talking about the Improvement Project, and that's from 5:30, 7:30 at Burton Barn Library. We try to invite everybody to come on down. And one last thing is that Keywit has a job fair. So right along the light rail on the south side, they're trying to hire individuals that live in the South Phoenix along the light rail path, and it's going to be February 11th at 9:00 a.m. at American Network. That's on Central Avenue and Broadway. So it's so important you come out and check it out, and if you need a job, we'll find you one. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, and thank you for your leadership on MLK Boulevard. With that, we are going to adjourn briefly and then come back for a work-study session on red light cameras. To talk about the city's policy and how we can use this tool appropriate. While being the fastest-growing city brings many opportunities, it has also meant we have to reexamine the tools we use to improve safety in our city. Red light cameras are but one tool in our public safety toolbox, but I think it's an important one, and today will give us opportunity to really dive deeper on the issue. We look forward to hearing more from our staff today on the matter, and I will turn it over to them to begin.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So we're here today to provide further information to you about how a photo-red light enforcement program could be set up in the future. As you said, photo enforcement in school zones and at some traffic intersection is one tool of many in an effort to deal with pedestrian safety and traffic enforcement. Just a little history as to why we're here. At the end of December, the city council voted to continue the city's existing contract for photo enforcement for school zones, vans for up to 10 months. But with that action, the city's photo-red light program contract was ended. At that meeting, though, there was a request for further information about the red light program, and so the mayor set this work-study session to discuss that information, which we're bringing to you today. We heard clearly the council's frustration with trying to understand the methodology that had been used in the past to identify locations for red light cameras. And quite frankly, the past methodology was not clear and was mostly a legacy of decisions made before any member of this council was in office or any member of the staff was in their current position. So we listened to your feedback at those meetings and at the briefings, and the street transportation director has developed a new, transparent, and simpler data-based methodology for the locations that we would advise if the program would be reinstituted. The simpler methodology resulted in a list attached in your packet of 600 intersections ranked based on available data, and the data-driven methodology will be explained thoroughly by Mario and Keeney. The purpose today is to have dialogue, answer questions, and establish whether the council would like staff to continue with the currently open request for proposals for photo-red light cameras and photo enforcement vans for school zones. So I'll now turn it over to Deputy City Manager Mario Panigawa, who will lead the presentation and will be happy to answer questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ed, and good afternoon, Mayor and council members. As Ed mentioned, today's work-study follows up on the council's previous discussion on the need to develop a more open, transparent, and objective methodology for locating red light cameras that's focused on improving safety at the city's most dangerous intersections. With me is Keeney Knutson, Street Transportation Director, who will be presenting the proposed updated process, along with the data and scoring for council to review in discussing the future placement of red light cameras. Also here with us is our Chief Financial Officer Denise Olson, who'll give an update on the procurement that is currently open for red lights to ensure that the RFP aligns with the city council direction. So I'll hand things off to Keeney to go through the data and the potential updated process.
Thank you, Mario. Mayor, members of the council, happy to be here today to talk about this topic. I would like to let you know, in the past few weeks, my team has put together a very objective process based on our data related to our intersections. So before we get into that process, I want to cover where the data comes from. First, our police department investigates crashes on our roadways each and every day. Second, the state compiles data related to crashes reported by Phoenix and other law enforcement agencies throughout the state. The state releases this compiled data annually, but it usually lags at least eight to 10 months from when the previous year was ended. Third, my street transportation staff reviews and analyzes this data for any issues or trends related to our intersections, our 1,150 traffic signalized traffic intersections, or our 5,000 miles of city streets. Based on that data, this afternoon, I will be laying out a proposed updated methodology to locate red light photo enforcement cameras at our city's intersections. This baseline data evaluation methodology would be based on three years of the most recent crash data. Utilizing three years of crash data will provide a sufficient recent crash information that will keep smooth, will smooth out peaks and valleys in observed data and, at the same time, help evaluate key trends in crash data. Currently, those three years are 2016 to 2018. We propose to utilize three specific areas of data. First is red light crashes, which will be based on the highest number of red light-running crashes by direction through an intersection. Second would be serious injuries and fatalities that are related to red light-running crashes. Third is crashes at intersections involving pedestrians where the driver is found to be at fault. Our street transportation staff would review this information for each of our signalized traffic intersections. Through the location selection process, there'll be three elements, these three elements of data would be key in that process. The number of incidents at each traffic intersection would be assigned a rating, a rating of 10 for each red light-running crash, and a rating of five for each serious and fatal injury related to a crash, and five for pedestrian-related involved crashes where the pedestrian, the driver is found to be at fault. So how would that work at a specific intersection? Let's take one particular intersection, 27th Avenue and Adams Street in District Seven. Now, keep in mind that this data is covering the three most recent years, 2016 through 2018. At this intersection, there were 18 northbound red light-running crashes. Applying the rating of 10 for each of these crashes provides a subtotal rating of 180 points or score of 180. Then at this intersection, there were also three serious and fatal injuries related to red light-running crashes. Applying a rating of five to each of these provides a subtotal of 15. Now, there were also zero pedestrian fatalities related at these intersections, but applying that rating of five for each of these gives a subtotal of obviously zero there in that case. The next step is to sum these subtotals together, which provides a resulting rating of 195 for this intersection. And so happens that 27th Avenue and Adams is our intersection with the highest total rating throughout the city. Now, this methodology is intended to be used objectively to determine which signalized intersections in the city would have the highest red light-running issues. On the screen, you see the first half of the 25 highest-rated intersections based on the methodology I just outlined. Please keep in mind that the higher the rating, the worse an intersection is for red light-running crashes. You may ask, why 25? At the Public Safety Subcommittee last spring, the Subcommittee recommended doubling the number of red light cameras from 12, from the current 12 to 24. On the first side, you'll see the top 12 intersections here, which have ratings between 110 to 195. The next, sorry, now the second half is showing on the screen, actually, back up there. You'll see on the second half of the screen, the next 13 of those top-rated intersections, which have a range from 90 all the way to 110. Sorry, I went the wrong way. Apologize. Hit the right button. All right. So the previous evaluation methodology wouldn't stop with a scoring outline on the previous slides. Each potential red light camera location would be reviewed by the staff with an eye for additional installation considerations to ensure that each location is feasible. First is a review of the available right-of-way to make sure that we have plenty of right-of-way to fit the red light camera equipment. Secondly, we would perform a review to make sure there's no underground utility conflicts that would keep us also be able to install a red light camera equipment. And a further review would be looking at upcoming construction projects. For example, our fourth rated, highest-rated intersection at First Avenue and Lincoln is going to be under construction soon related to the South Central Extension for Light Rail. So a decision would have to be made whether or not we would install a camera there at that location before construction starts or during construction starts, or wait till after it's complete. Finally, some potential locations have jurisdictional boundary concerns, where we might have to use another city's right-of-way in order to install red light camera equipment. And in some cases, we might actually have red light camera, red light-running issues at an intersection that's controlled by ADOT but within the city of Phoenix boundaries. So we'd have to work through those issues on those. It should be noted, based on the past discussion with council and the commentary that's been made, that if we do locate a camera at a location where we don't have the higher rating, that we would want to make sure we document to make sure that the process is clear and transparent to everyone, both today and in years to come. So the methodology that I just laid out for you would be used not just to, would be used to locate our new red light cameras, but it could also be used to evaluate additional new red light locations, but also for potential relocation of existing cameras. Street transportation staff would conduct reviews of the most recent crash data on an annual basis. The updated data would then be used to update our baseline evaluation ratings that we have using the new year of crash data. And then finally, that new, that annual update would be provided in a report format to council. This report would have recommendations on proposed new camera locations, but may also include recommendations for proposed relocations of red light cameras. I would note that staff recommends that red light cameras be installed and located in their current locations or in a location for at least three years before we consider relocation, so we can have an opportunity to evaluate three years of new data with a camera and location, so we can really identify behavioral trends related to a red light camera. Now I'm going to turn it over to Denise Olson, who's going to take you through the request for proposal specifics.
Good afternoon, Mayor, members of the council. As stated, we are in the middle of a procurement process. This procurement process includes both red light cameras as well as photo enforcement vans. The Public Safety Subcommittee did recommend we issue this RFP in April of 2019. This was posted on September 20th of 2019, and we expect submissions on February 14th of 2020. I want to just take a few minutes to talk about some important information that's currently in the RFP that's on the street. First, we have the option to go up to 24 fixed red light cameras and 16 enforcement vans. This is basically doubling what we've had previously, and this was also per Subcommittee recommendation. The other thing I want to point out is the city has a sole responsibility, authority to select the camera locations. Also, we currently have the contractor being paid per citation. This is a common practice in the industry. However, if the city chooses to do relocation of red light cameras during the contract term, we may choose to include a price for relocation in the RFP. And then just last, I want to say that this RFP can be amended and can also be extended per council direction.
Thank you, Denise. So, Mayor, council members, in summary, we're looking for, to the council for additional guidance on the proposed objective data and considerations for determining where red light cameras need to be placed and the annual, ongoing annual evaluation process. Staff would also seek council confirmation on the number of cameras the city's looking to place and any feedback on the current request for proposals. Thank you. That concludes our presentation, and staff seeks to work together with all of you under your leadership to develop this process for moving forward, and we're available to answer any questions you have.
Thank you. Councilmember questions? We'll start with Councilwoman Pastore.
Page five, the top 25 results. I'm a little confused as to, it has one to 10, and then 10 to 24, then it goes from 10 to 24. Is the first one, top 25 results, the number one, the highest ranking of fatalities? And then the below one is of, I'm not sure. I don't even know what I'm asking, so can I need clarity?
Just to clarify, Councilwoman, are you looking at the PowerPoint pages or the report page? Is it-
Looking at page five, slide five or PowerPoint.
It's on the PowerPoint?
Yeah, I just, I didn't understand.
Mayor, Councilmember Pastore, the reason is that we had a tie for the rating score. So what you have there is, in that case, you have a tie for ninth, actually, you have two at eight. They're both scored at 115 each.
Oh, got it.
And then the next ones have the same rating of 110 for the next three. So that's why they have the same-
Value.
Value.
Okay. And so the highest score is 200 or 195?
195.
Okay. Got it. Only I'm concerned because I have eight of them in my district. I mean, there, I am the core, though.
Well, and your district's pedestrian safety is a real challenge. Councilmember Garcia.
Yeah. I really would want to see us talk about the problem we're trying to solve and not just this particular tactic that we've been using, and it feels like we're rushing to get this back without having a comprehensive plan of how we're going to actually address safety. I think, I think I would want to see that definition before we move forward, so we can actually see all the things that we're doing to address either the incidents or pedestrian safety. You use the 27th Avenue and Adams, and we had a conversation about this earlier. There's obviously something wrong there. We haven't done anything. And knowing the intersection, it's an intersection that goes from a one-way, and everybody who leaves the statehouse area and downtown, and it's essentially a T and then goes into a community. There's low visibility, and there's a lot of problems just thinking about when I drive through that intersection. That intersection, because of the way it's set up, I don't think it makes sense to have a red light camera, so I would want to see a plan of what are we doing to address the one that's way up ahead and then way up ahead in the score-wise. And similar to the first one in District Eight that's on here, First Avenue and Lincoln, you see First Avenue curve in that area, and you see there's other issues there besides folks running red lights. I would also want to know a little bit more about the powers that the previous contractor held, Red Flex, in the sense of, did they write the tickets? Did they kind of write what was mailed out to people? Kind of a little bit more explanation about where and breakdown of where the money was used and where it went? And so my understanding is the letters and what people got from, came directly from Red Flex, and it was their language, and it was in one language. I also have questions about the process itself. Could we shift it in the sense of, are we able to give warnings, then tickets, or who controls that piece of it? We've had this program for 19 years, and it's just, it's a little appalling that we don't have more data, or we're not having a better sense of how we're making these decisions. And the last thing I'll say is, we continue to incentivize- And the last thing I'll say is, we continue to incentivize more tickets, right? We're paying, even in the current procurement, we're asking the contract to be paid by citation, meaning we're continuing to incentivize more people being ticketed in order to the payout. And I understand, last time I was explaining that the city's not really making funds from this, but someone is, and I forgot the numbers from last time, the millions that we've gained from it. And so, yeah, I think, to me, it's just, again, I would like to think of the broader problem of safety, rather than just running right back to trying to figure out where we set these cameras.
Mayor, Councilmember Garcia, I think I'll first address the first part with just overall safety of our intersections. The methodology I laid out today was just using three elements of data that we felt are important related to red light running issues and concerns. There are a lot of other data points and a lot of other things we look at for, related to our roadway safety and our intersection safety. So, I would say, we're bringing this to bear, just to talk about the red light cameras and the red light runnings, to make sure we have a transparent process related to red light cameras. When it comes to intersection safety and roadway safety, we have a whole, I guess, tools in our toolbox to be able to look at those as a street transportation department, and we regularly do look at those based on evaluation of data we see, and we come back from, either from Maricopa Association of Governments, or from the state. We also have conversations with council members about potential, particular areas that they're looking at or concerned. We also hear from the public about those. So, we have an ability to do what we call roadway safety assessments, where we work in, work with our regional partners to identify funding for those, and be able to do basically a wholesale look at a location, in this instance, for example, intersection, say, 27th Avenue and Adams, where we could look at, what are the various concerns here that are contributing, not just to red light running crashes or incidents, but also all other types of safety concerns that might be at that intersection. Could be concerns with people who have disabilities and be able to get around, could be pedestrian-related issues, be able to just access the roadway, and be able to cross the roadway safely. So, there's different things that we would look at, whether it's street lighting, sidewalks, ramps, signal timing, pedestrian signal timing, there's all things that we could look at when it comes to roadway safety assessment. So, we routinely do those. That's not necessarily apart from talking about red light cameras. We would look at, from our perspective, is red light cameras being a tool to help address safety at an intersection, but there's other tools like this. I would tell you also that we have the Pedestrian Safety Task Force and the Office of Pedestrian Safety that this council unanimously supported for us, forming, and it has a $2 million budget to address pedestrian safety issues around the city, not just at intersections, but roadways as well, and we're looking at street lighting issues, crosswalks, HOC signals, and other signal issues that we could do to be able to help make our streets safer. We also pursued a federal grant recently, last year, it was a build grant formerly called the Tiger Program, where we were looking at a corridor on 35th Avenue, which is one of our highest pedestrian crash areas where we went to for, looking for funding to be able to get from the federal level to be able to address some of those safety concerns in there. So, that's something we generally look at all the way through. It's not just today, when we're talking about red light cameras, but it's something we do routinely. I'll kind of try to cover a little bit of the revenue piece, but I can always call in our Budget and Research Director, who's up here to help me out here. But, what I understand is when those, when fines or taxes or citations are paid, the state does have, basically, take about 54% of that, is that correct, Jeff?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, taking into account some conversations I had with the judge earlier today, if you take the average red light camera citation, which is about $272, the state does take 54% of that right off the top as a surcharge, so $146 goes directly to the state. Then, the city gets the remaining 46%, and so, that accounts to about $126 of that citation. About 35 of that, under the existing agreement, goes to the vendor, and then, the remaining $91 goes back to the city to cover the cost of the program, for essentially, it goes into the general fund. If you recall from the presentation in the packet that was submitted last time we discussed this issue, I believe, Councilman Garcia, you referenced this, last year, for example, the program netted $57,000, so essentially, it broke even. So, when you look at the cost that was paid to the vendor, which was about $700,000 and change, versus, and the city's cost of about $500,000, we essentially broke even at about $1.3 million.
And, Councilmember, did we get the answers to your questions you were looking for? You had, I think, four questions, and I just.
Yes. I apologize for throwing them all out there.
Well, I just want to make sure, I guess, one was related to the timing of the procurement, so will you take us through the timing of the procurement? When did this begin, and when is it due?
Right, so, so as I stated, we have the procurement out on the street. We put it out there in September of 2019. Right now, we expect to have proposals due on February 14th of 2020. Now, we can do an amendment to that procurement to extend it based on council direction today. If you remember, we have an existing contract for the mobile vans only, and that was a four-month extension, and then, month-to-month for six months.
The question was more to the past 19 years, but it's okay. I think the things I really want to know about is, how much does the vendor Red Flex have in the sense of what goes out to people? Like, the letter, the warning, who, because that's a really, once I saw that document, it's really confusing. It's only in English, and there's a lot of problems with that. And so, I wanted to know that. And then, the last question was around, do we have the powers to, for example, first-time offenders, give them a warning, or mail them a warning, and then mail them a ticket, or shift that process? Do we have that access to that, or is that a state decision? Is that somebody else's decision?
Mayor, Councilman, my name is Lieutenant Seth Johnkey. I'm with the Phoenix Police Traffic Unit. Hopefully, I can help answer your question. If the camera catches a violation, Red Flex does the initial work, or the contract company does the initial work, or they tie the vehicle to the plate, at which time, it goes into their system, and I have sworn staff that approves every single ticket, so we look at every single one. We make sure a violation has occurred. Once we approve that violation, and the police have said, yes, a violation occurred, we approve it in their system, at which time, they do send out, the contract company does send out a form letter, kind of an industry-standard letter, to go out to the people that says, here's your notice of violation.
Do we have any say on what that looks like? Is that something they developed on their own? How did that work out?
Mayor, Councilman Garcia, that would have been authored long before I ever got this position. I have never seen anything documented, whether we had a say in it or not, I don't know. I'm sorry.
Can I, so.
We could certainly stipulate what we want that to say. I mean, that would be a contract issue that we could absolutely do.
Regarding the letter, or what I received, and it was a van area, what I receive, I know, I paid worse, what I received was a letter, and it said, it had a picture of me and said, such-and-such date, you know, you were over. And then, I received something from the courts, I want to say, to say, if you want to appear in the courts, you can appear in the courts, and then, you can say, if this is you, it's not you, and then, you determine what you want to do. Do you want to go to class, or do you want to pay for it? There's a whole process. Am I correct, or the judge may know this one?
And, Mayor, Madam Mayor, members of the council, I think what you're talking about, and I haven't seen it, is an actual citation from a court. Once it becomes an actual citation from the court, which is a separate process from what the officer's talking about, it should have a great deal of information on there about what the options are, including if it's a red light ticket, things like the fact that regardless of the outcome, if there's a finding of responsibility, the traffic survival school is going to be required by MVD. It also talks about the option of going to the defensive driving program, if that's available to you, if you're eligible because you haven't gone in the previous year, and how that works. So, those are things that should be on that citation as it comes out.
Then, we were, then I must have received two different pieces of information of me receiving a ticket, because there was one of me, I saw, you know, I saw the picture, and it was me, and so, I was like, okay, what is this? And then, I figured out where I was, and how it happened, and then, I was like, okay, and then, I got more pieces in the mail as to what I needed to do, what the process was and everything. So, there is, I guess, initially, some confusion, because then, I'm getting it from the city because I see the logo. So, is there a letter that initially goes out from Red Flex, and then, there's other additional stuff, or could you explain the process?
Sure. My understanding is there isn't anything that goes out from Red Flex. What goes out is the notice from the police department early on, and so, perhaps the officer can describe that one. I think he was starting to a moment ago.
Yeah, so, it, yes, once we approve the ticket, the police department doesn't actually mail that notice. It's approved in Red Flex's system. The initial one comes out, it's usually, I've been in the same boat you did, when I saw my picture on that van, too, several years ago. There is a website attached. Right. When you open the website, once you open the website, or once you log on to that specific number, it is a admission of service. Yes, I've got it. Yes, this is me. Then, the city gets involved, because now, you've said, yes.
Councilman Noakowski.
First of all, I'd just like to thank our staff for all this data. It's good information, and how you split it up from accidents to pedestrians to what, if they're coming from the northeast, west, and south, so that's really good information. But, one of the things I've been hearing from people is that some people are upset because the lights are gone. Other people are happy that the lights are gone. Other people are saying that they didn't really do anything for them. So, you know, it's a mixed feeling, right? So, my, and then, the other thing is, to fall into this conversation, is that they're confused. They say that they get a citation with their picture on it, they take it down to the city courts, pay their fine, and then, about three weeks later, they got, their license is suspended. They get a call either from their insurance company, or if they happen to be pulled over again, then they find out, oops, your license is suspended, and they're saying, well, I paid the fine. Then, they come down to the court system, they talk to our courts, what are they called? The individuals at the windows, and they said, yes, you did, but you have to go through a school, and it's mandatory. So, my thing is, why don't we pass that information on people that actually pay their fine, and then, basically, tell them, you have to go through school? I think there's, it's, there's miscommunication there, and I think that's where a lot of people are getting very upset about it. And they think it's a scam that we, as the City of Phoenix, are doing with some of the schools out there, and that we're, we're making people go to school. It's not us, it's the state law, and as you see that, the state's actually taking 54% of the fine. So, that's, that's one thing. The other thing is, I'm asking the Streets Department, I mean, after going through all this, what do you think? I mean, after looking at all these intersections and the top 46, what do you think is a problem? Is there a pattern that you see? Is there something that they all have in common? Is it that the roads aren't straight, that there's maybe some trees in the way, that this, I don't know, is there something that you've seen that might be in common of all these 47 or 46 intersections that you put in here? You have more than that, but let's just say, the top 50, right? That may, it might be something fixable besides just putting a camera up there. It might be something about visibility. It might be, my personal opinion, I'm just looking at all the people that have been hit, pedestrians, and I know that the one right here in my district on 51st and Thomas, it's the lighting. I mean, if you try to make a right-hand turn on Thomas off of 51st, you can't see anything. It's so dark at nighttime, right? So, I'm not sure if that's a situation, maybe other intersections where you look at where the pedestrians are, right? You know, I'm looking at number 24 on 19th Avenue and Indian School, they have 30 individuals that were hit, you know? So, I wonder if there's anything there, if it's lighting, or what time of the day they're getting hit? Is it in the morning? Is it in the afternoon? Is it during, you know, morning traffic, or going back, getting out of work? And then, you know, the other one is on 7th Avenue and Indian School, there's 20 individuals that were hit there, and then, you go into, like, 12th Street and Camelback at 15, and then, on 7th Street and Greenway, there's 15. So, it's spread out. I'm just wondering if there's something so simple where we have to put more streetlights onto the sidewalks, so that people can see the pedestrians walking around and stuff. So, I'm just wondering, did you happen to see anything, or?
Mayor, Councilmember Noakowski, first thing I wanted to admit, just a slight correction to two intersections you were talking about, when you were looking at the number there, that's actually the score.
Okay.
Of that, or the rating for that area for, related pedestrians. So, at, for example, 19th Avenue and Indian School, there was six pedestrian-related collisions, and then, at 7th Avenue and Indian School, there was four during those three-year period.
So, on this, on this thing, where does it actually say?
If you go over four, oh, I'm, are you looking, yeah, on that one, if you move four columns to the left, where you see it highlighted four and six, on yours? I don't know if you see that. So, the column heading up above on top says PED, in parentheses, driver. That gives you an idea of, that's, that's the list of how many pedestrian-related incidents or crashes there are.
Oh, you have four.
At a given intersection. So, with the five, the rating of five for each one of those, that's why you get 30 on the one for 19th and Indian School. But, back to your larger question, it's just about the safety and what we're observing at these. I'll give you my opinion, both as a resident of Phoenix, but also as the Street Transportation Director. There's not, where I live, there's not a huge number of red light cameras, but I'll tell you, I see red light camera, red light running every day. I see impatient drivers, I see people speeding, and when I, if I'm looking specifically at these top 50 here, I know I see a good number of the accident reports that the police department puts together, and a lot of those cases, I see speeding and impatience out there. That's, that's what leads to a lot of these, whether it's one that's related to red light running, or when you have a lot of our pedestrian injuries and fatalities related accidents. So, those are the ones, I would say, those are things I see out there when I'm just looking at it from a broad brush push, but going back to your talking about lighting, kind of like the answer I gave to Councilmember Garcia, I'm looking at the whole thing, because as we look at things, when we talk about pedestrian-related, just pedestrian-related issues, we go out and install a HOC signal at a location, and we've shown here in the council that you could put a HOC signal out there, but it doesn't mean people are going to necessarily use it every single time. So, there's, it has to be other things we have to do, combined with education and enforcement out there to do those kind of things. But, I will tell you, when you're talking about these kind of issues, I'm not going to look at it just being the red light camera's going to solve everything. There's other things we've got to do at each one of these intersections, and I'm committed to be able to look at those things, and my team is dedicated to doing it, and I just had a conversation with some of my management team today, actually, it was earlier this week, when they're talking about some of the crashes involving serious injuries and fatalities, and especially some of the pedestrian ones, or, and they're just, some of my team is just beat up about having to see this every single day. And I imagine it's the same as for the, our first responders who have to go out there. So, I think you got people here across this table from you that, who are definitely committed to trying to improve the safety of our roadways and our intersections, and this is one tool, I just see this as a tool to help us to be able to do that.
Thank you.
I think Vice, Vice Mayor, and then, Councilwoman Stark.
Okay, so, I have a bunch, bunch of questions. So, the, so the first one, I mean, I don't want to continue to beat a dead horse, right? But, when you don't speak English and you see this, right, and this is what you get in the mail, it's like, how do you, how do you respond to this? Right? And given that in District Five, you know, people paid $174,000 worth in tickets, I want to, in the last couple of years, this is really complicated, and I'm not sure if we answered the question about whether or not we have control over what we send out to people, and also, making sure that we also send it in Spanish. Right? We need to make sure that people have direction in terms of what are, concretely, what are the steps? Is it that you just can pay the ticket and you're done with it, but it stays in your, in your driver's license? Making sure that people understand what that means, if they don't go to the traffic school, and then, I don't know if there's a way where we can offer the, offer the classes at a lower cost for folks, right? People that just don't want to see that in their, in their driver's license, and that want to be responsible, and we're just having a stressful day, and they want, they don't want to have this on their, on their license, but definitely want to take the classes. I, so, so being able to look at that, and how is it that we are able to facilitate all this information? So being able to look at that and how is it that we are able to facilitate all this information, but not make it look so complicated at the same time? I know that Mesa, whatever Mesa does, maybe we can look into that. They seem to have a very simple process on how they communicate with folks when they, when they actually get a ticket. So that's, so that's one thing. And the other thing is, I would like to understand how red lights cameras tie into the overall work being done by the city on motorists and pedestrian safety. I know that cities like Tucson have adopted citywide street safety action plans. Does the city have something similar to that? And if not, what can we do as a staff in creating and releasing maybe a similar plan to that? That's something that I think we might be able to look into. The other thing, in 2016, the City of Portland developed a strategy to include retrofitting 10 priority crossings a year to give pedestrians more visibility, talking about pedestrian safety, along with other improvements for pedestrian infrastructure. In 2018, traffic deaths in Portland were the lowest in four years. Is there anything that the city can do to identify and address some of these problematic intersections? You know, we keep talking about these intersections. I know I have a lot of them in District Five and a lot of them also have to do with lighting. So trying to figure out, how do we deal with that, deal with that issue? Glendale seems to be like a call of concern for a lot of people in District Five. So hopefully being able to look at that. And there's also like other cities like Menlo Park, Santa Rosa, and Montgomery have begun using adaptive traffic management systems that synchronize traffic signals to optimize traffic flow across the whole city. The SCAD system operates in mealtime and can adjust signal timings in response to variations in traffic demand. Has the city looked into these sorts of systems and how they could improve safety? I know that as someone, I was just remembering, as someone that just, that moved to Arizona 12 years ago, like I remember when I first moved here, just thinking like how people speed in, in Phoenix and also thinking like there's some intersections that maybe it shouldn't be 45 miles per hour, maybe it should be 35 miles per hour. It just seems that, yeah, like, I mean, try, I, I think a lot of these issues could also be fixed, right? Like if, if our speed limits were just a little bit lower in certain parts of the, certain parts of the city. And then also like who, who designated, and I don't want to keep beating up a dead horse, but who designated the last, the last cameras? The cameras that are out there, who, who decided those intersections?
Mayor and Vice Mayor, I think the, the kind of conversation we had back in December was, you know, the best we could find is we found some pieces of information that we found from people who either were retired or no longer in the positions about what kind of generally went through. And I, I think what I could probably tell you is that, that the list of, the 12 locations that were cited there were, I would call them high crash locations, but I would say, as we've kind of showed here in some of the data that we've provided to council in the past, they weren't necessarily the highest crash locations across the city. So from what we've been able to tell is, is that's, there's not a really good answer for why, why those are put in that we've been able to find. But that's one of the reasons why we're here today to talk about a process that we can look forward to that say, in front of council, this is the process we would, if we were going to have red light cameras, this is what we would use. And really want to try to get your input on that, on looking forward. I mean, I wasn't in my position back in 2015.
No, I know you weren't, right? That's a reason I say.
But I would love to have been, give you the right answer and said, this is exactly how it was done. Unfortunately, we weren't able to find that. But I'm definitely trying to say I'm behind a process today that you can feel comfortable with, that the rest of the council can feel comfortable if we decide to move forward with red light cameras.
And, and do you think that's, that's a reason why? Because I was looking at the, at the different intersections and, and the ones in District Five are not even, they didn't even make it on this list. Like 35th and Glendale like are not here and 53rd and, and this, and then this school like are also not in here.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, the one thing I'd, I'd say about that, and this is something we noted in some of the reports we provided to council earlier, if you're just looking at, let's just say, the nine cameras, because in 2015, nine camera locations were new to their location. If we looked at the data before that and the data after that, immediately after those camera locations, they did reduce red light running crashes at those intersections by about 57%. So we did experience that. Now, today, I wouldn't expect them to be the highest 10 or highest 20 because if they are an effective tool in reducing that, then I would think that was what we're going forward. And that's why we want to have a process that not only tells us how we locate it and see what the effect of locating in certain locations going forward.
And then also, the only other thing I didn't, or maybe I just didn't, didn't read it or didn't see it, is trying to see how is it that we also rotate the vans in, in the schools? Like what's the system for that? And then are we, would we be expanding the, the van system as well to be able to cover more schools at more times? Also like wanted to see a little bit more around, around that. And then also, I wanted you guys to expand a little bit more here where it says contractor is paid by citation. Like what, what does that mean?
Yes, thank you, Vice Mayor. So what, what we're asking for is when we put the proposal out, the bid sheet that they propose on, they will put, give us a price that we would pay the vendor per citation and that citation issued.
So does that mean that, that will, that will incentivize people to want to write more citations? Like what's the, like what's the, like what's the motivation behind wanting to put that there?
That's really a common practice in the industry. Again, these are cameras, so if you run the red light, it automatically takes a picture of it, sends it to the police department, and then from that, a citation will be issued. And then we charge, or the vendor charges us for that citation.
Okay, thank you.
So I think it, there's no, because it's an objective thing, the camera fires a picture or it doesn't, there's no, the, the company or the vendor would have no ability to do more or less, right? So, so I understand the thing, the more citations, the more revenue, but it's not as if there's discretion among people to write more or fewer tickets because it's, it's an automated system with the camera, if that makes sense.
And Ed, if I may add, I think the thing to remember, it's taking the picture, the camera's taking the picture, but the officers are reviewing that. So the vendor only gets paid when, one, the citation was released by the officer, and then ultimately that person satisfies and says, hey, I admit it was me, I'm paying it. So the vendor only gets paid after all of those steps have, have been satisfied.
And then Vice Mayor, you asked about the letter. If we do this, we're the contract holder, so we can, to some point, the judge will amplify this, we can control what the language is in that, in that, in that citation by our contract, but the judge can speak about what the limitations are in the court. And then in terms of Spanish, we can talk about that and about offering classes at a lower cost. I think those are some questions and maybe the judge can amplify on that.
Sure. Madam Vice Mayor, members, so let me say, first of all, it's probably important that this be on the record, I'm not here to talk about safety like Keeney is. You know, as the court, we're keenly aware of the fact that we adjudicate all of these cases and not just the photo enforcement tickets, but all the tickets. And we have to do that fairly. And so as the judiciary, we, we try very hard not to get involved in policy discussions. This is a classic policy discussion for this body as to how to enforce and whether or not to use red light cameras. So I'm not here to, to advocate one way or the other for that. And I think you've raised some important questions about notice to the individuals involved because it can be hugely frustrating to people. And I understand it can be a complicated system. But I think it's important to understand the process so that we know exactly what that member of the public is going to have happen to them in terms of that notice. When the, when the citation is issued, when it's actually sent out by the court, when it's become a citation and it goes out to the court, we actually send information with that. And when it is that one violation that actually requires as an additional thing, that traffic survival school at the end of it, which is the red light violation, that's included. That information is on that paper so people know, if I pay this ticket or I decide to have a hearing and I'm found responsible on this ticket, I'm going to get that requirement to go and attend traffic survival school. So notice is very much given to them. I will also tell you that as a matter of course, when people call in to pay tickets or they come in to pay tickets and they speak to our clerks, we tell them about that consequence. I can tell you that when I'm in the, on the, on the bench in my suspended license court, I go out of my way to tell people before they plead responsible to a red light ticket. Understand, this is not something that's coming from the court. I'm not ordering you to do it, but you will, as a consequence of this, at some point in the near future, be getting a letter from MVD saying, we got notice, you were found responsible for a red light violation. You're now required by state law to go to traffic survival school. And that's the, the eight-hour course that someone has to go through. And that's not the only violation that traffic survival school exists for. There are others as well. So we want to make sure that people are aware of that as they go through. I think it's also important to keep in mind that license suspension is not a result of getting a, a red light ticket. The license suspension comes if someone ignores the letter that they get from MVD afterwards that says you now have 60 days to complete traffic survival school. So in terms of notice, there is an awful lot of information that does go out to people so that they're aware of those consequences. Could it be better? Probably. We occasionally do have people that come into the court and have been confused by it. There's not a whole lot of latitude on many of those things. The way that citations are formatted is actually in a form that, you know, is mandated by the Arizona Supreme Court, can only be changed by them. In fact, we would have to get permission to deviate from any aspect of that. I know that there are legal requirements about what has to be on anything that goes out. On a photo enforcement ticket particularly, I know the police department has incorporated those. There may be some flexibility in what else is put in that, but it might be limited. So I just wanted to make sure that, that process is clear about how people move from step to step to step.
And I wanted to respond to something the Vice Mayor said, which was a question about whether we should have a clear citywide pedestrian safety plan. The council did look into, looking at such a planning exercise before you were elected and voted not to do so. I think we need to do so. Some of the hardest days for me in this job is meeting with the parents, with parents who've lost their children. I have, Casey Clark's father gave me a picture of her that I have in my office and said, please do better for parents going forward and for kids going forward, and I would like to do that. So that is something you're interested in working on. We need to do it. The City of Phoenix has some rough traffic statistics and pedestrian fatality statistics, and it's something that is very much worth our attention. I next saw Councilwoman Stark.
Thank you, and I appreciate your comments. I was going to say the same thing. We did talk about Vision Zero, right or wrong, maybe that's not the right program for us, but we need to talk about a comprehensive program. We need to talk, just not about the cameras, but the lane widths, the size of the sidewalks. Do we need more medians? I think we really do need to have that comprehensive discussion. But I do think that the, the red light cameras are an important tool. I know that we not, we do not have the motors that we used to have, right or wrong. As the recession hit, we, we took from the motors, but we used to have a very robust traffic enforcement program in the City of Phoenix, and we don't. And so I agree with Keeney, you're seeing a lot more speeding, a lot more impatient drivers, and so we have a problem. And I too, Mayor, have stood with parents who lost their children because of a red light runner. We have the reputation of being the deadliest city when it comes to red light running. So I think we need to keep this as a tool. I don't disagree that we need to really look at the entire program and maybe look at how we process. I am totally for talking about that because I want to make sure we have a fair process. But I think it is an important tool. And I know that the chief is committed to building the motors back up, but that will take time. And in the interim, we need other tools. So I for one would love to have another discussion. When you talk about Portland, they actually do have Vision Zero in Portland. My brother lives in Portland, so very familiar what they are doing in there. So I think if we could have that bigger conversation, I am up for that. And again, it doesn't have to be Vision Zero. It may be a new program that the City of Phoenix comes up with. But in the interim, I would like us to proceed with this RFP, if we need to add some to the RFP. And I, you know, I, I'm not sure how we chose the lights that we did. I know back in the day, they were probably different districts. I think 7th Street and Bell used to be a part of District Two. Right or wrong, somehow they were selected, but now we have a process. I really say kudos to what you've done, Keeney. I think you've put together a real thoughtful way of looking at ways to assess these intersections. I'm hoping when you do that, you also are looking at other issues, whether it's lighting or landscaping, that visibility issues. But I do think that we need to keep this, I think we need to move forward with the RFP. I do think we need to explain, expand the program from more than just 12. I just, it's, it's an important tool in, in our traffic enforcement.
Councilwoman Pestore and then Councilmember, I'm sorry, Councilwoman, Councilwoman DeCecio has not had a chance to speak yet, so we will go to Councilwoman DeCecio.
Well, that's nice. Thank you, Mayor. I don't know where to start here. When you're talking about tools in a toolbox, you're talking about all your tools. We're talking about two different things here. If you're talking about pedestrian safety, that's one issue. The other, and does have some impact on the intersections, but today's discussion was supposed to be about the intersections. I was looking forward toward this, except the fact this became nothing more than just another red light discussion that we've already said. If you look at the subcommittee, they were very clear. They wanted to look at all options. Today's presentation is nothing about red light, that that's all it's about. So.
The agenda item is red light camera discussion.
I understand that, but what came out of the subcommittee, they wanted to look at all options. I read their, I read their notes on that, Mayor.
And the full council asked to discuss red light cameras.
Okay, well, you're looking at one item.
Well, we did try to have a more comprehensive look. And you didn't want to move forward on that either.
Mayor, I'm being very clear here. The comprehensive look would have been looking at the yellow lights, the extension of that. Keeney, is there, there is a movement, you and I've had this conversation across the nation now, including the National Safety Board, Highway Safety Board, not highway, but the roads, but they're looking at extending the yellow lights, correct?
Mayor, Councilwoman DeCecio, as we had a conversation about that, yes, there is a proposal that some of the national standards boards are looking at to increase yellow light timings. That has not been made official yet, or we have not heard whether that's going forward or not. But as we talked about, right now currently, as a city, as a street transportation department, we follow these national standards. We follow our own national, our own standards for doing red, our yellow light timing. And when those national standards change, we will come and advise council that we're going to adhere to those national standards as they change and then adjust our yellow light timing.
So like Dayton, Chicago and other cities, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mayor.
No, I just wanted to make very clear that Councilman Noakowski, who chairs the Public Safety Subcommittee, asked for a work study on red lights cameras. We had very in-depth discussion where people wanted to talk about how we could create a safe system that makes sense for our community. What were the appropriate standards?
The notes that were from there, Mayor, the discussion that occurred, was looking at all options as well. So if you look at the notes of what came out of the subcommittee was the idea to look at everything comprehensively. You can't just look at one tool and say, this is the tool that's going to work or it's going to be part of it. You don't know what the other tools are going to be that you're going to need to include in something like this.
Councilman Noakowski chaired that subcommittee and asked for it. And I do want to remind you, we asked to have a citywide discussion and open a conversation about pedestrian safety with no final action, and you opposed that. So you can't come back and say, now you want to do it.
So on December 18th.
You were pushing Vision Zero, but that was.
On December 18th, we voted on, Councilman Noakowski asked for a study session on red lights. It was a discussion on December 18th.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
What were the comments there, Laura? What were the comments that came out of there?
December 18th, he asked for a study session on red lights.
Agreed. But if you look at what came out of that, was a discussion to see, to look at everything. Look, I'm not going to get stuck in the weeds here. I know what I saw in the notes. We could look at it differently, we could go from there, but I need to finish this too. We could go from there, but I need to finish this, too. So, Keeney, if we look at everything together, you look at all these lights, do we have any data that shows how many people got in an accident because they slammed on the brakes because the yellow light was too short?
Mayor, Councilman DeCecio, in some of our briefings, I think with your staff, we mentioned and talked about that because you're talking about 12 red camera locations currently, or that we had previously before January 1. That would be something, if this moves forward with red light cameras, we would be committed to analyzing the data that's related to potential rear-end crashes related to people slamming on their brakes before, so they don't have a red light violation. I think that's an important, you know, thing to look at, to make sure we inform the council if we see trends related to that. But I think the major reason why I would recommend, or I'd be here talking about red light cameras, is try to reduce the serious injuries and fatalities that typically result from red light running incidents and crashes that we see in the city.
Councilwoman Williams.
So the bottom line, oh, I'm not all the way done yet, Mayor. Can I finish, or it's your choice? I'd like to finish.
Okay, please finish.
So, Keeney, when we're talking about the extension of the yellow lights, there is no data. You're telling me, do we have any crash data on intersections?
Yes, Mayor, Councilman DeCecio, we have crash data for intersections. I will tell you, going back to the yellow light timing, that we use national standards to timer yellow lights. And I know we've talked a little bit about Chicago, and we do timing of our yellow lights based on speed limits, and so it varies. From Chicago, we've learned that they use just a straight three seconds of yellow time for anything 30 miles an hour below and use 40 second, four seconds for any yellow lights for 35 miles an hour and above. We have an adjustment within our yellow light timings that actually adjusts to each one of the, each five mile an hour increment of our streets. So I would say that we are, we do probably a better job of adjusting for the actual traffic on the street and what happens on the street than having just a rule like Chicago has currently.
So intuitively, do you believe that if we were to extend the yellow light, that the intersections would allow individuals to go through safely? That's a, you know, yes or no. Intuitively, do you believe that?
Mayor, Councilman DeCecio, at a blanket yes or no, I would say no. It does not. I think from the standpoint, from my professional opinion, there are studies out there that show if you extend yellow light timing beyond what the national standards indicate, that motors will disregard the yellow light timing and treat it as an extension of the green phase. And if there's any change in behavior related to yellow lights, it is temporary in nature. Those are what studies have shown.
So that means that the National Board comes out and says, "Yeah, we do recommend that extending the yellow light is critical." You're saying that they're going to be wrong on that, correct? I mean, you're going to be disputing exactly what they're coming out with. That's what they're coming out with.
Mayor, Councilman DeCecio, if they make a decision to... Sorry, Councilman. If they make a decision to extend yellow light timings as part of the formula for calculating yellow light phase timings for intersections, I am quite confident that when they do that, they'll have a solid backing and reasoning behind that to go along with the formula that we would then use to extend yellow light times. So it wouldn't be just adding a half a second or a second. In one of the other cities we talked about, I know Dayton, we also learned that their state legislature just mandated adding a second of yellow light time to all of their intersections, regardless of what the traffic engineering issues were related to those.
But, Keeney, you were very clear. Intuitively, you said that it's not going to work. So we'll have to make that adjustment, our decision later, even though the entire country is moving toward an extension of the yellow lights for safety. We're going to say no. But the other part of it deals with the part where I think Mr. Garcia brought up. Matter of fact, he brought up some really good points today. The idea that we're paying per light or per infraction creates a commission-type of basis. I got what Ed said on that. But the bottom line, it also prevents you from looking at other ways to reduce it. So can we move to a different model if you wanted to do these? I'm not supportive of that. But can you look to a different model that basically pays them a one lump sum?
Mayor, would, right now, our lights are set for purposes of any potential cases we might have? If someone, correct, Keeney, is it more of a liability issue? Right now, we use the traffic standards we have today because they've been proven and tested, and that's what we want to stick with until proven otherwise?
Mayor, Councilwoman Stark, yes. If I sat there and said today in 2020 that the national standards we follow today have never changed, I would be lying to you. They do change, they do adjust, and that's what we would always adjust to as those national standards. But they take a lot of thoughtful commentary and feedback and process to go through that. For me to go and say, "I'm going to start changing, going away from the national standards and going to arbitrarily or systematically just add time to our yellow lights without having any solid backing behind that," I would be heavily concerned, in my professional opinion, about putting the city at risk and liability for anything that might happen at that intersection because somebody disregarded a red light because of the extended yellow light time, or whatever the situation may be. We get sued a lot as a city, and especially my department gets named in some of those as well. And so I would not want to put, do anything that would create additional risk and liability on the city or our department. And that's something I've talked with our law department as well about this, and they've backed me up on that, that that's something we don't want to be in the business of doing, just arbitrarily doing that.
Mayor, that wasn't the question I had. I asked him if intuitively this was going to work or not, and he said no. So I think I got my answer from that, and he doesn't believe that extending the yellow light's going to happen, or is a good idea, because it's not going to produce any safer intersections. The second point that I'm trying to get across is, can we pay? No, I heard. We'll go back and look at the record, I guess. But the commission-based versus a fee-based, we can change that if we wanted to, correct?
Yes, we determine...
That's a yes or no, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, the city can determine the basis. Now, there's pros and cons to doing one or the other.
Okay. Then the other one deals with, I don't think Councilman Garcia, unless I didn't hear it correctly, and that could be true, I'm getting older, I just had a birthday, so I'm an older guy. So Councilman Garcia asked a question. Can we basically waive a citation? I believe we can, but I don't think we got a straight answer on that. And if we did, please correct me. That's the police.
Sorry, now I'm on. Madam Mayor, Mr. DeCecio, Councilman DeCecio, this is Judge Taylor. I'm unaware of any authority for waiving a citation. Now, it seems to me that the Phoenix Police Department certainly is in control over whether or not a citation is issued, so...
There you go. Sorry.
I think that answers your question.
I, it does. So to answer Councilman Garcia's question, can the city of Phoenix basically not issue and make it a warning, basically, on the first citation? I believe we can, correct?
How do you track them?
Can we issue a warning? Well, I'm just asking the question.
Councilwoman DeCecio, I think you could absolutely issue a warning. It wouldn't be, it wouldn't be the first citation. I think what you're suggesting is that the first time someone is found to have violated it on the camera, that instead of a citation, what would follow would be a warning letter.
Correct. So we can do that. So from my end of it, I just don't think we have enough information. I'd like to see, this is not about the pedestrian side of it only, it's about the intersections from my end, I would like to see a more comprehensive plan, looking at everything. I'd also like to have staff look at what's happening at the national level and make a presentation on that, rather than say, "Hey, we're going to, we want more red light cameras." I would like to see that. And I'd also like to see, because we have to have crash data from an intersection, how many of those, you know, how many of those accidents were caused by the fact that somebody slammed on their brakes and because they were afraid to go through the intersection and get a ticket. I think we can do that.
Mayor?
Councilwoman Williams.
Are you through, Councilman?
I am. Yeah, thank you, I am.
First of all, I'd like to say I know that Keeney is very sensitive to yellow lights where there's been crashes. He has went out and timed a couple in my district to make sure that it was favorable for a good flow-through and not a crash. So I know he's very cognizant of that and keeps track of it. I also know that I've served on the Public Safety Committee and on the Transportation Committee. And this has been discussed for at least the last 18 months, one way or the other, on pedestrian safety, traffic, and our red lights. I was the one, I think, that really pushed the expansion for an RFP because I am a firm believer that they really work. I want us to see if we can continue with the RFP, if we can have consideration of doubling the 24 lights. I also would like to have us look at three-year statistics once they're in place to reevaluate if that's, they're being successful, or if they can be moved to another area that has had more traffic accidents. For the yellow lights, I know in my district, that usually means speed up to get across before it turns red. So I understand the timing is significant, judging it from both directions, but I also know how people speed in this city, and it is probably the best-known city for automobile speeding in the nation. I think it's very important we continue with this. We've talked about it. But we've also talked about street lighting, having more street lights because a lot of our streets are dark. Sidewalks are a problem, even intersections are a problem in some areas. And the timing of allowing people to walk across an intersection. We've talked about the signals to change the light, especially when it comes to the disabled people who happen to be in a wheelchair because they were too high. And so we have gone back out and looked at all of those to make sure the button is in an appropriate place. I think everybody's correct. We need to continue with this. I think it's important. I know Councilman Nowakowski and I did some commercials for public safety and "Don't Speed" and use the crosswalks, and I think the Hawks are being successful. I think we're kind of catching up to a lot of deficiencies that we've had in the last couple of years on in traffic as our traffic has increased tremendously. People are moving here in growth, and they're all moving here in cars. And they all like the long stretch of street. You look down the street and it goes for a long ways. That encourages speeding, whether they stop and think about it or not. And I think we need to be very cognizant of that. I want to see us continue. I'd like to see the RFP continued and doubled, and we can add some things to the RFP. But if we were to change the mechanism for the tickets and give warnings, how does the vendor get paid? Denise, would that be you?
That's a great question. I think Jeff and Denise can talk about that.
Kind of lumped several things together, but words from God up there.
Yeah, we'll have to, we'll have to look at that. I mean, one option may be just to increase the citations that are issued, so we can see the vendor price on those go up to recover the cost that would go out for the warnings. Other things is we may have a price per warning. We may also, again, look at relocating the cameras and see if there's a price we can attach to that.
Would you be bringing back the RFP qualifications to the entire council or to the subcommittee?
I'm at, I'm at council's discretion there.
Let's clarify, though, on the answer on the warning.
Mayor, members of the council, I think on the warning, just one thing to consider because this is kind of a cost recovery model, essentially, if you will, from the vendor's perspective. So if you were to go into this from the standpoint, as I'm serving the city and I'm looking at the volume of tickets that we issue, generate, and actually end up getting paid, I would then have to take some measure of those out. And if I'm still trying to recover a cost of X, then I'm going to raise the price to the city on those that are paid, just so that I can actually stay afloat. So that's one thing to keep in mind. If we are talking about that, I am, as the vendor, I would simply raise my cost to the city on an individual per-paid basis so that I could still recover my cost.
The ability to capture those that are repeat offenders?
I would assume they would within their data. If they can't, I assume that we could at some point give them some idea based on the number of citations and the individuals that have paid. We could look for the repeats or the duplicates. I would work with the court and judge to get that. To me, it's just like a research study. You pull the data and you kind of start pairing it up and see how many people were in there more than once.
How many are repeat and how many...
That's a good question.
Learn their lessons the first time.
One clarification there. How far back would you want us to look on those repeat offenders?
Oh, just a couple of years.
Councilmember Garcia.
So I have one question pending and to something that Councilman Nowakowski alluded to about people getting their licenses suspended. And so I think where we're seeing that scenario is when people are served, and I wanted to understand the process. So I get mailed a ticket, I decide to throw it away, I don't see it, someone shows up and serves me. Who sends that person? And then at receiving that, you're admitting guilt. How does that work?
Mayor, Councilwoman Garcia, so you asked first, who sends the person to serve? So we're talking actual personal service. And under the law, that's what is required if someone has not responded to what is mailed out to them. The cost of that personal service is actually something that is tacked on at the end of the day to be paid by the individual who was personally served. But we're the ones, we, meaning the court, are the ones that actually do the notifications so that the process servers go out and actually serve people. And again, the purpose of the service is to make sure that the person absolutely has notice of the ticket, absolutely has notice of what their options are and what the court date is.
And back to the previous question, just one thing. I think to me important would be, and I don't know how much we could look at, again, being a new person, profit margins and where competition comes in of other possible vendors, whether they can, I think, again, adding in the RFP the possibility of a warning system and those sorts of things.
Thank you. I'll think about that. Maybe we can do two options in the RFP and kind of do a price comparison, so let me give some thought to that.
Councilwoman Pastore and then Councilwoman Stark.
Well, I think what's happening today is you want directives. An RFP is on, is out. If we want to add additional items or look at additional items, then we need to give Denise the directive to go look at it so then she can incorporate it into the RFP, or if possible, or it doesn't go out, or we just say we're pulling it back. We need to do more work. I think that's what the dialogue is intended to do in order for the staff to know how to, what to do. But the person that represents the district with the most pedestrian fatalities and the most red light runners is District Four. And so I am just putting it on the record that I am supportive of the RFP. And I'm supportive of putting up cameras as we look in the future. What I also heard was, as we go forward, to come together, come back together, and create a comprehensive plan with all the elements that cause, I want to say 27th and Avenue and Adams, what is causing all the fatality or red lights? What can we do to the environment to improve it? And with the improvement, really see, does the behavior change or doesn't it? And I think that's what I'm hearing from a collective of saying that's what we want to see at every one of these. I know it's going to take time, but start from number one and work ourselves to that point. It's going to cost money, so we're going to have to be dedicated to putting money into that, if we have money to put into it. But when we take money from somewhere, we move it to somewhere else, so just be cognizant of that. What I'm also hearing is that in the citation process, that there really needs to be some clarity. clarity as to, once I receive the citation, I don't have the paper right there. Can I see that real fast? To me, this is very small for me to read. I'm older and my eyes, you know, are getting old. And the other thing is, is that this is very cumbersome to read. So please provide me something that I'm going to look at and then be able to know where I need to go and what I need to do with some clarity. So what I'm going to ask for is I would like a flow chart of when you receive a ticket. And what I mean by a flow chart as to, you're here, you need to go to court, or you need to do this, then this is what happens. If you don't do this, this is where it's going to go. If you get subpoenaed, or, not served, not subpoena, served, then this is what it means. If you don't do this, your license is now in jeopardy. That works, as a teacher, that works with a lot of people in order to then understand what's happening throughout the process and really the system because it's confusing. And so I would like to see something like that. And it's also easier to understand if there's just not a lot of sentences, just like, here it is, this is the process. Or have it included with the citation. I, as many of, I sat on the Public Safety Committee. I think it was our discussion at the Transportation Committee because we started talking about some of the fatalities and some of the, we started talking, I don't know how we got on the subject of the red lights, but we asked, it was the RFP. We asked, how come the red lights are so low? We want to add more. We want to have, add more to the contract or add more to the RFP because of the numbers that we were looking at. And then it went, and then we said, we'll move it to public safety in order to have that dialogue, a bigger dialogue, and be able to understand, have people understand what's happening in the transportation area. And that's really, really where it started because the report hit that morning, and I believe somebody came to our subcommittee and said, wait a minute, you're the number one pedestrian fatalities. What are you doing? So I think it's very important to understand that people are dying. And we have a large number of red light runners. So we have to do something right now. This is one of the tools. It's not all the tools, but we have to do something because I'm afraid there's going to be another fatality. And I think it's important to understand that.
Councilwoman Stark, and then we'll try to come together and talk about where to go next.
Thank you, and I agree with you, Councilwoman Pastor. I think we need to move forward with this and maybe look at some language to add to the RFP. But I do have a question. When a motor or when a police officer catches you, how often do you give a warning versus give an actual ticket? Just curious, not to put you on the spot.
Mayor Councilwoman Stark, it depends on the motor. In the past, motors have been notoriously harsh, but it completely is up to the officer. Officers have discretion. Personally, I tend to give more warnings than anything else.
But if the accident is involved, then you're more likely to give a ticket, correct? If there's an actual accident?
If there is an accident, you're going to get a ticket, yes.
Okay, thank you. So I am happy to move forward and listen to any other suggestions, but.
So we have one policy between now and the date the RFP is due, but that is scheduled for public works, and we really are going to need to have that. We've been having extensive community meetings. So today is really the time we have to decide if we do want to move forward with the RFP. I agree with Councilwoman Stark and Pastor that we should move forward if we can put parameters around it that make sense to council members. It sounds like we feel confident that we can improve the communications we are sending and make sure people have an easier time understanding it. There are some questions about, that would fundamentally restructure the way it happens, and I don't think we have an additional time to make that discussion happen. We really just need to come today if we're going to be moving forward with the RFP or not.
Mayor?
Councilman DeCiccio.
Oh, thank you. Just to be clear then on my end, I don't believe we're even close to being ready to do that. I think there were a lot of questions that were brought up today. I'm not going to hog up any time any more than I've already taken, but I don't believe we're ready.
For the council members who didn't support moving forward with red light cameras, if no one has changed their mind, then we probably should not move forward with the RFP.
Mayor, I would like to move forward, but perhaps, not to put more work on your shoulders, Councilwoman Nowakowski, but maybe you have a healthy discussion in your subcommittee about the citations, the language, looking at having it both in English, Spanish, some of those details with that. And then we could extend maybe the RFP for another month, give them some time to fine-tune some of the language. I don't want to put work on your shoulders.
Do you have time on the February Public Safety agenda?
We could try to put it on. But the other thing, too, is, I mean, people are brought to our attention that this is the only city that we have all these new snowboards coming in and having the Seventh Streets changing the time of using the middle lane where we, where people call it the suicide lane. People that have been living here forever understand it, but then you have individuals that are moving in for the wintertime that don't understand it at all. And so residents that live between the Sevens are saying, get rid of it. So I mean, there's another situation where I was looking at all the Sevens and just adding the crash, the crashes, total crashes. It's quite a few, and I think we need to look at all different options. Out in Levine, I mean, we just got a new 202, and we didn't have all these traffic lights. And, you know, I want to thank the Streets Director for putting a traffic light right there on Southern. And, you know, that was something that the committee asked for. We were able to move it. So we have different needs in different areas. So I think we really need to look at this. When I'm driving to work every day down Washington Street, I mean, all of a sudden you have a bike lane and it disappears, and then the bikes are forced to go into traffic. I think we need to look at all that, and we need to look at all these, all these intersections and figure it out that, is it that there's no bike lane and all of a sudden they have to merge into traffic? And now you have cars trying to wave over? I'm not sure what it is. It's about trying to save lives. And I think it's beyond just the red lights. That's a tool that we need to use. But is there other tools such as lights at those intersections that are dark at night so people can see those individuals crossing the street? Is it a lack of crosswalks? Is it using more of the hawk system? What is it that we can actually turn around? Is it looking and revisiting the suicide lanes that, I mean, that middle lane that everybody that lives in Phoenix calls the suicide lane? Is it revisiting that now that we have the 17 and the 51? Back then, there wasn't that, so that's where those lanes were created. So I'm not sure. And then all the different one ways that, we actually have a meeting right now at the Burn Bar Library to talk about Fifth and Third Avenue, if it should be one-way, two-wings, or, you know, what's developing on that. So I think that we're growing up. We're the fifth-largest city in the country, and what used to work before, it's not working for such a large city with all this traffic. And we need to figure it out. It's not just a silver bullet approach where you put red light, I mean, these cameras up. I think it's a lot more than that. So I think the cameras are one part of it, but I think we should look at all the different tools that we can use, right?
Mayor, if I could, so I think this discussion illustrates the council is closely divided on the issue, and that makes it difficult to move forward with an RFP because we don't want to do an RFP that then comes back and the vendors and everyone has spent time and it doesn't work. If I might suggest, I think the council has pretty, had consensus that the photo vans are worthwhile. What we could do is continue the RFP for the photo van enforcement and split out the photo red light piece and have more council dialogue with that. Alternatively, we could, we could have the RFP go forward and have them bid on both separately. Eventually, we'll come to the council to decide at that point if there's been an opportunity. What's going to be hard is for the vendor to price the photo red light if we're not really clear about, you know, how we want the citations to work and whether there are warnings or not. So what I'm hearing, and contradict me if I'm wrong, is that we should probably move forward with the photo van enforcement component of the RFP and hold on the photo red light for further council discussion, but I'm open to being told that I didn't hear it right.
I think he heard it right from my end. Oh, sorry, man, sorry.
I think that does reflect the majority, so we do not, although I disagree, it does not seem like the majority of the council wants to move forward with red light cameras.
Mayor, I guess I thought maybe we'd just delay it all by a month so we could have a little more dialogue on the actual citation and other issues, the warning versus non-warning. And if that would be just a month, I would prefer to delay everything by a month and just try to work out those details so that they could be included in the RFP.
I mean, I definitely, I am part of the Public Safety Subcommittee, so I think I'm definitely committed to trying to, not to hurry it up, but definitely to look for these solutions that we're looking for. I understand the importance of having the red lights cameras, but I also understand that we also definitely need a more comprehensive plan. So I think, I don't want to speak for everyone on the Public Safety Subcommittee, but I think we're definitely committed to making it a big priority in the month of early, early February to try to like move this forward as soon as we can so that we can get the red light cameras up and running. But then also excited to explore all the other options and the comprehensive plan that we, that we can develop to deal with this, not just with the red light cameras, but trying to figure out how do we, how do we deal with the safety issues that we have here in the city.
Thank you, and I think Councilwoman Stark has certainly been our leader on pedestrian safety, but I am committed to working with you to make this a safer city as well.
So I'm understanding we should just then pause the RFP for a month in its entirety is.
I don't think I heard that. I heard that there's a lot more research that needs to be done through Public Safety. Then you can make a determination.
The vice mayor said that we wouldn't pause it for a month and move forward, and certainly welcome to hear from the chairman of the Subcommittee about whether you want to move forward or just.
I have no problem bringing it back to the Subcommittee and listen to it and trying to figure it out.
And we have optimism that we could.
I just, I just would want to hear about, is it possible to go back and ask RFP, you're adding a holder language, you're adding different things? If that's possible, is one month possible, knowing that we also didn't have a Subcommittee in January? Our February one is pretty packed, so, and it's up to you, Councilman Nowakowski.
Mayor, February is a very packed agenda for us, and I think this conversation is going to take more than just about 15 minutes or half hour. So I'd like to really, I'll talk to my colleagues that are on the Subcommittee, see if there's a special meeting that we can put on or we can wait until the next Subcommittee after that.
So that our staff can have some direction. Are we pausing or canceling?
We can pause the entire thing. We could cancel. Pausing would mean we just simply would hold the current RFP open for another 30 days, allowing time. Canceling would mean we're just going to scrap it and wait until we get consideration. We could also split it out and have the photo van piece go forward and regroup on the photo red light and do that separately at a later date.
I mean, I don't think we're saying that we're scrapping. I think we're saying we're putting, we're putting it on hold, and we need to have like an internal conversation, the Subcommittee members, to try to see if there's items that we can take off the agenda to give more time for this, for this item to be heard at the Subcommittee, but I don't want to talk for our chair, for our chairperson on the Subcommittee. But definitely, I'd be committed to putting a lot more time in the Subcommittee to talk about this.
Going with the city manager's suggestion is, I think we're all in favor of the school vans, and if there's a way to go ahead and continue with the school vans, and then once we have this debate on the, on the cameras, then could we add that on later on in the future?
I think what you would do is you would just do a separate RFP for cameras.
The only question I have.
Rather than adding it into the other one. You should probably just do them separately if you want to do it that way.
But was it, because we did away with the light, red lights, it actually ended up costing us more for them to do the vans? So I wonder from a.
Does affect the price.
Cost-effective perspective that we try to keep them together? Because I think we ended up voting for an additional $130,000, which I was happy that we did for the school vans, but maybe for the companies out there, it's better to run them parallel. That's just thinking about the company. I know there's not a lot of companies out there.
That's a consideration, yes.
Mayor, so if there is an RFP, I mean, we're going with the existing company that now, taking the red light cameras away from them, there was an additional cost. There might be a bidder that comes in even lower than that, right? You never know.
We don't know.
That is exactly correct. I'm totally in favor of doing the school vans. I've been there from day one.
Okay, so just responding to the vice mayor, I think we are doing a pause, but I'm 30 days? 60 days?
The limitation is at some point, we're going, so October 31st is the end of our contract authority for the photo vans. So if you back up from that, we can't go indefinitely without an RFP unless we're ready to say at some point the photo vans, we won't have a contract ready to go on November the 1st. But we have a little bit of time. I would look to Denise. I mean, we could, March 31st.
Yeah, so we could, we could extend, we can always come back to the council and extend the van portion month to month. That's for another extension, and so a little bit more payment authority if we need to extend that period of time.
So we could say we'll hold the current RFP open, let's say till March 31st to give basically 60 days, Mayor, I think as you suggested as a time, or somebody suggested as a time, to try and work through whether the council has a comprehensive plan that includes something that we could put photo red light into.
Councilwoman Pastor.
What's the latest point of where extensions should happen? Or I guess where I'm at is how far can we extend it? And at what point do we just eventually, it's just not moving? Because we're going to go round and round in this conversation. This is the third time we're going round and round in this conversation. I'd just like to get to the space where either we're going to make it go or we're going to kill it. And Denise, I need to know from you, at what point is the deadline date?
There's, there's a lot of discretion here, but I would keep in mind, we put this on the streets September.
Right.
It would be, we would probably be better off canceling it if we went past that year mark of an open solicitation.
Okay.
Okay, so I think we're going to do a 30-day, sorry, a 60-day extension. If the Public Safety Subcommittee does not forward anything, then we will cancel it.
And Mayor?
Councilman DeCiccio, our final comment, we hope.
Okay, sorry, I'm hoping it is. We can do the RFP on the vans to see what else is out there. We can still do that. At the same time, if we don't like what we get back, we can always do the 30-day extensions with the current company. I mean, why can't you do both? That way, we keep the vans moving forward, which we, I think we're pretty much in unison and agreement on that, but why couldn't we do that? Then let the Public Safety Subcommittee figure out the rest of it.
We were responding to Councilwoman Stark's point that we had to pay an additional $130,000 because they were not moving together. So I think the members of this body who are most likely to vote for red light cameras see value. are most likely to vote for red light cameras, see value in that savings.
Correct.
We do not count you in that.
No, but I'm saying that, but the RFP can still move forward, just on the vans. Why can't we do that?
We, the majority of...
And at the same time, do the 30-day extension. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
I think we had a plan. 60 days? Thank you.
With both?
Yes, with both. Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you so much for taking a deeper dive.
Good to hear that.